Here we go. Welcome to the village board meeting. Today is Monday, February 13. We began our evening with an executive session at six o'clock that discussed personnel matters and we have now emerged into a regular work session. First item on power, the chat is discussion regarding the plaza study. Second, I'm going to go. Share my screen. So Eric, you can report this. We've been talking to Wagner Hodgson, our landscape architects that we have worked with for the last several years regarding the civic space. The issue for us being to address the question of what the condition would look like when spring is coming early, close the slip lane. And make the right turn only lane emerging from Memorial Plaza to allow people to turn right up onto. Change at that intersection and some significant changes throughout the monuments. And so the question here was, how can we leave this in the best and most appropriate interim condition? And is that work that we can potentially do that would benefit the overall civic space project if and when we were.
That's right. And so what we have here is a schematic and Jeff Hodgson from Wagner Hodgson Architects is on. He just reports that you enable him to turn his video on. So what they've done is essentially take aspects of the designed civic space and insert them into the areas that would be left vacant once we abandoned the slip lane as part of the Manville Road project. So I'll let Jeff go into more detail about the design, but one thing it does is it gets a lot more green in the area. As part of the Manville Road project, we would have to remove the trees behind the monuments. And this plan would add more, more trees in that entire area in the, in a BASK area there that would have seating. And then on either side of the monuments where you see the green in front of the monument would be a grass area. So Jeff, if you're able to hear us, I'll let you take it away.
All right. Can you hear me?
You should have Jeff, the capacity to speak and also determine.
Oh, can you hear me?
Is there a way to put up a volume somewhere? Cause I think he is trying to talk.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Is this speaker selected for the hour?
Can you guys hear me?
Hold on Jeff, we can't hear you.
We heard you. All right.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening. I'm Jeff Hodgson, a partner with Wagner Hodgson Landscape Architecture in Hudson, New York. And we're excited to be a part of this, this project. And as Eric mentioned, you know, with the streetscape completing this summer and the slip lane going away, we're looking to make some landscape improvements to the area in front of the memorial. So between the existing parking lot and the existing memorial. And really just creating a nice green space with some shade trees, shrubs, generous kind of lawn area in front. And also we'll be improving the, the lighting on the memorials. And putting some new pavement in front of the memorials, some granite pavers. The existing flagpoles will remain. And obviously the existing memorials will stay as is. The existing trees behind the memorial are going to have to be removed as part of the streetscape project. So we'll be putting all new plant material in behind the memorials.
So Jeff, the, the trees here, the pinkish ones are the ones that are removed, right?
Uh, no, those are going to be the new ones. The, the existing ones are actually, you know, because the, the streets widening, the existing trees are, they fall kind of right where the new retaining wall will be behind the monument. So they're actually in the future sidewalk area, the existing trees. So.
Right.
So what are the different species of trees in this design? I, I see some writing, but it's far too small for me to be able to read.
We, we have not gotten that far yet. So that's going to be something that we look at once the project moves forward, but we'll be looking at largely native plant material, hardy and non-invasive. You know, trees and shrubs that can take kind of urban conditions.
That sounds good. Um, one, one question I had, I don't know if I'm jumping too far ahead, but is about the cost impact of staggering the plan this way. So, uh, and I know you can't really answer this, but you have any thoughts about this? I mean, I see the staggering it, but I can also, you know, imagine an argument, you know, assuming we have the money, which we don't necessarily anyway, but of doing it all in one piece. And I just wonder if you have any thoughts about that?
Sure. It's, you know, it's always more expensive to do things in two pieces, but it's really just the kind of mobilization of the contractors and, and things like that, that you pay extra for doing it twice. Or it actually, you know, the, the portion we're proposing to build, you know, is kind of a, one of the easier portions to build. There's not much pavement. It's largely green space and planting and irrigation. So it's kind of a, a good dividing point. Uh, as far as, you know, this first part, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And, and further, fair to say nearly all of this work would contribute to the whole in the end. Relatively small amount of it would get torn up at the.
Very, yes. Yeah, very small amount, really just the kind of gray temporary asphalt path at the north and then a tiny piece down at the south near the crosswalk. So everything else would stay completely intact.
So since we had a zoom the other day, but why don't you just report, there've been some grade changes here, right? So now we have.
Yeah. Yep. So we, um, we had to work out the drainage so that it did not drain towards Grant Street. It needs to drain back towards the parking lot. So it required just raising the grade at the sidewalk a little bit, adding two more granite steps to the granite steps that we had already been showing there. So pretty minimal.
Jeff, my, my name is Michael Pepperd. It looks to me like this is, you know, well over half of the projects. Is that, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
It is. It's kind of the soft scape portion. So there's, you know, obviously hardscape portion that's not part of this, but yes, it's, I would say from a, you know, a square foot area, it's probably a little bit over 50%. So.
But you're also built, there's also the steps, there's retaining walls, there's and so there's, there's a bit of hardscaping involved here, right?
A little bit. Yeah. Yep. There's the granite pavers in front of the memorial, a concrete sidewalk, and then the stone dust seeding area under the trees. So there's a little bit. Yep.
So we're going to have all this work that PCI is doing as part of the Manville Road project around the corner here and building this retaining wall and cutting back the corner. So.
Yep. Yeah, we're, the only lighting we're doing, we're keeping the existing parking lot lighting right now. And we're just focusing on improving the lighting at the memorial.
Which very much needs it. So among the many virtues of this is the, the memorials will be in a vastly more appropriate setting.
Yes.
And also illuminated in a vastly more appropriate way. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it will be, it will be immediately more dignified for our memorial and Veterans Day events.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I think it'll provide much needed green in that area, you know.
What's the cost of this? So round figures, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff and Eric, it's in the neighborhood of $500,000 is the cost estimate. And we have in our hands $407,000 in state grants. Uh, largely due to the efforts of our former assemblyman, Tom Avananti. Uh, and so we're in the fortunate circumstance that a very significant piece of this first phase is already paid.
Yeah. So basically we can get started and we're just using mostly like 90% grant money, right?
Correct. I mean, we have to lay out village funds. It's a reimbursement.
Right, right.
We'll, we'll run numbers on whether or not it makes sense to do a short tomorrow and save fund balance or so we'll get to that. Yes, essentially at the end of the year.
It looks great.
It's great.
So Jeff, we're also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now is that a fun?
Yeah. What's the timeline proposed here with the Manville Road timeline didn't happen? So what, what do we think for this one? Sorry, that was too negative. What's the proposed timeline?
That's why no one responds.
Well, yeah, we, we do need to wait for the Manville streetscape to finish, which I believe is supposed to be in late summer.
Um, and. Late summer, yes.
Yep. And we believe that the construction for this part of the, the park is probably in the range of two to three months.
Oh, great.
That's not bad.
The wild card here is the new signal at Granville Memorial Plaza, which has been ordered now for, you know, six months. They're, they're, they're imagining it be delivered by a July timeframe. Once it goes up, the signal gets installed, we have to go through the testing program with DOT. So we have to wait until we get the approval of DOT to make that, that new traffic lane operational before the slip lane can be abandoned. So that's the, the wild card.
So I don't think we, we should pretty clearly imagine this is likely spring 2024 as opposed to fall 2023. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I, I think either is in play right now, but as we get closer, we'll be able to more definitively, you know, as it would be the spring and summer, get updates on delivering all of that.
And Jeff, what about the planting season for new tree material alike?
Yeah.
Too late, right?
Um, you know, it really depends on the season, you know, this year we were planting way into November. So it really depends on what kind of fall we have next year, but you know, we prefer to have either spring or fall planting, not midsummer. So either way, I think it's, it's good timing. So.
Okay. All right. Looks good. Anything further, funny way?
No, it's exciting. I think this will also give village residents the sense of what this can be without any price tag or with a very timely price tag to the village.
And we, we preserve the apartment at this end, which becomes a, a dead end and you turn around and come back out this way. So.
Yeah. Sometime I would love to talk about maybe sponsoring a couple of events once this is in place. Or, you know, even possibly before, just to give people an idea of um, what it would, what it's like to have a plant space.
Like for example, a 15 song set by Rihanna?
Lifting platforms. Yeah. Can you keep?
Well, the gender reveal has to happen sometimes. So we could host that.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff, for your good work.
Sure.
Uh, we appreciate it and we'll return you to the rest of your life.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Police chief Eric Rutter regarding capital item requests for F E 20, FYD 2024, we're in the midst of the budget process uh, for the fiscal year ending in 2024, which begins June 1. I'm guessing this is expensive.
Exactly. So this is, um, yeah, there's, there's a couple of different issues that I'd like to discuss, many of, all of which you're aware of. Some of them are updates. Uh, and obviously Lieutenant Wallman and Lieutenant Gil Martin are here to serve as my subject matter experts on, uh, on all sorts of different issues. So we have a couple of different things to discuss tonight. I'll start off with, I've come and spoken to you before about our communication system. Our communication system is currently end of life. It is a unique build just for our municipality. We have an antenna at the water tower site. We have the ability to, it is a digital, it's currently an analog system.
Currently analog VHS.
So currently analog VHS system, which is dated, although we're able to scan and have other departments to scan ours. We have been exploring the possibility of switching over to a new system. A, because it's the current system we have is end of life, but B, because of the need, and we'll discuss this as more as we go on, the need for interoperability. Uh, you know, for 20 plus years, we've recognized that we need to communicate better with, with the people who we work closest with, which are the other agencies around us. And so we're looking to enhance our ability to do that. So uh, some time ago, I believe it was last year, we looked into joining, uh, the, uh, the MTA police have a very robust system. It's backed up by FirstNet. It is extremely well established in this area. They are offering the opportunity for municipalities to join with them. Uh, we decided that would be a good thing and we came forward with some numbers on that. We ended up testing the radios on the system and it turns out that between the bad cell service coverage that we have in the, um, in the village and the individual terrain of our area, we did, we still had a number of dead spots. Excuse me. Um, so everything kind of went on hold as we did more testing, tried to come up with some different ways to solve our problems. Uh, and it turns out that now at this point, we, we found out just in the last couple of weeks that MTA is actually going to be installing an antenna in our immediate jurisdiction. They're going to put that up at the water tanks. So now, so the way the.
For their purpose.
For their network.
Right.
So the way the radios work is it's, it's called multiband. So we have the opportunity of going on a, a system similar to the one that we have now, which is a radio based. You know, the waves travel back or through antennas, but the portable radios themselves and the, uh, have the opportunity to also transmit over an LTE system.
I'm sorry, multiband is the system that the NTA uses?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Ours was single band. So it was, the transmission wasn't good enough, then your message wasn't getting through.
Okay.
So now this has the, we, you, we can manually switch back and forth. So if for whatever reason, there's a problem with the network, we can go on to the, it's called the P25 system, which is the antenna based system, and we can, we can alternate back and forth as our needs, uh, as our needs require. We wouldn't expect now with an antenna, currently the antennas are, there's one about Halla, there's one in Mount Kisco. So we were sort of right in the middle. You're just sort of just out of range of both of them. The system itself, when you get on the system and you transmit, it's incredible. Because it is LTE based, we could be anywhere, you know, I've heard stories of people being up in the Adirondacks, talking to people at the Jersey Shore over their police radios because they both had internet coverage. So. And tonight, um, Lieutenant Wallen has some of the numbers. They're updated. They're not very much different than they were before, but wanted to have the opportunity to discuss it with you again, especially because now with the antenna coming, this is, this is absolutely our way forward. So. Do you want to, yeah, sure.
Just to, uh, just recap with the multiband question. So also what the multiband does is we're on a DHF, which means very high frequency system. Some departments are on UHF, which is ultra high frequency. Some departments are on seven, eight hundred megahertz. So we weren't able to talk to those other agencies that are UHF or seven, eight hundred megahertz. So these radios that the MTA uses is through a company, it's Altery Harris radios, and they have the capability to talk or you can switch over to UHF, 700 megahertz, DHF, whichever one it is. And they also have that LTE function, which is incredible. If the radios were there, the MTA, which is, has a very robust system, but for some reason it was failing, you have that redundancy for LTE. And then for, if you're at a jurisdiction and, or you're away from their, a range of their antennas, you have that LTE function as well. So they're, they're the futures of radios, you know? So right now, what we would need between our mobile units, which, which are our radios that goes in, go in the cars, uh, are portable multiband radios. And we also looked at ordering to, uh, some single bands portable radios because we don't feel that like our parking enforcement or a court officer to need a single band radio. And then there's a few other reasons downstairs where we could save money by getting these single band radios. But the total currently would be $295,000, uh, right in the range of $300,000 for this entire, uh, to purchase all the radios. The benefit of it is that we're no longer on the hook for the infrastructure. So we have these radios. We can work off the MTA system. If in the future the county says, you know what, we've now, we're prepared to take law enforcement across the county. We still have the radios. We can switch to their channels. They can give us a channel. So we'll have the equipment, the radios, but we no longer have to worry about our own antennas, our own repeater system. Uh, we don't have to worry about, um, so going forward, if we were to update our existing analog radio repeater system, we would be on the hook monthly for network connectivity to run. Right now, we're very lucky. We've been able to just beam a low band frequency from the roof of, of our building here up to the water tower with no monthly cost. That's not, you know, nobody is doing that nowadays. That's going away. And it's a, it's going to be a, a fiber line that would be run directly up there. And that has a relatively expensive fee, which we won't be on, on hook for that anymore. So.
What, what role does the roof antenna stuff we have now play on this building?
Uh, so that's, you know, that, and what happens is when one of our cars keys up our radio out on the road, if it's, if the signal is stronger to the antenna on the roof of our building, it will come to there. If it doesn't, it will go, if it's closer, say they're up in the old village, they would hit the tower, the, the water tower antenna, which we then send that frequency back to the antenna on the roof here and, and give us our communication.
And the MTA upgrade on the water towers doesn't change that?
Wouldn't change that at all. That would be, we wouldn't really need that antenna anymore on the roof. That wouldn't be necessary.
Would we take it down?
It's a good question. So, uh, it's, you know, that's a question that we have to talk about, um, you know? So one of the, the only downside is now that we go, we're going to go from analog to digital. If we're digital, we, we can't scan any agency that isn't digital. We have the capabilities of talking to analog. So any, any agency hasn't come up to the digital age yet. Uh, they're still on analog. We're not scanning them. So we can talk to them. We have to switch, manually switch to their band to speak to them on their analog system. It's capable of talking to them. So we just have had some internal conversations. We haven't really gotten there yet. Maybe just letting our radio, old radio system be there just to scan. Um, but it's a conversation.
And where is Mount Pleasant on this?
Um, I believe Mount Pleasant did, uh, they're pursuing, from what I know, um, their own radio system, upgraded individual radio system. I think they use a company called Goose Town.
Digital or?
They're going to go digital, but they're not going, uh, at the time when they tested the MTA system, it's my understanding that they were not aware that there was a tower going up here. And I don't know if that would necessarily completely solve their issues, but they had a lot of dead spots in Mount Pleasant. So I don't know if, you know, one antenna here would fit all of their problems.
Are they the agency I assume that we have the most interrelationship with?
Mount Pleasant.
Newcastle.
Yeah, county, yeah.
County as well.
Yeah.
County is digital.
Now going digital.
With this network?
They're not on. So interesting part, they actually, uh, MTA did give them one of their channels. So they're digital. They're not on the exact same radio system. They still have their own, county has their own infrastructure, but they were given a channel that they can use of the MTA's, which, so they kind of are operating on both.
And what does the fire department use for their own communications and for the communication with you?
Uh, so currently we can speak, well, we speak to them through sixty control, right?
So we don't, at this point now, we don't have a direct, uh, radio link with the fire department. Uh, they are dispatched out of sixty control, which is down around Halla. So if we get a call here for an alarm system and it's either a necessity, a fire alarm or, um, or, you know, we recognize the need for, we would call sixty control and they would dispatch.
Then operationally on the scene, the radio interoperability doesn't really matter or?
Usually the, whoever the, uh, lead officer and the lead fire personnel will stay together and, and assist each other as, as they go.
Okay.
And then, you know, we, so, uh, in some jurisdictions, they are switching their DPW radios, their, their ambulance radios over to this. You know, at this point now, we're, we're going to sort of test the waters on that, uh, you know, I haven't spoken to the PVA captain or to DPW about potentially going there, but you know, the real impetus for this was because our, excuse me, our radio system was reaching end of life. We had to find something to go to.
I understand.
PVA, it's our understanding that PVA's dispatching procedures may be changing. We'll see, need to talk to them, um, via radios, but their dispatching protocols may be changing in the next few weeks. So.
I'm pretty confident with these new radios, they're capable of talking with we going forward and having some conversations with the fire department. I think we could talk directly to them. They're pretty much capable of talking and.
Like we talked about, we'll, we'll maintain our, our old, um, systems in place as best we can.
I mean, you're not carrying around extra radios in the car, right?
So each car.
My next question was, can we sell the old ones for some sort of surplus? Uh, can we return them to Apple? They sent you a box.
Yeah. So we're, we're going to hang on to them at least in the beginning until, because like we said, not all, not everybody's coming onto the same system. Not everybody's just, that has gotten into the digital age, uh, as we have. And so we might need to actually maintain our radios in the cars, uh, for scanning purposes for the.
So that, I mean, that, that's another cost, right? I mean, those things keep the gift that keeps on giving, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how much, you know, I, I don't know how much capital we would pump into the old system.
But I mean, at some point, you're going to replace the radio equipment in cars.
Yes. This cost includes new radios for each one of the cars and new portables for each of us.
And so what happens to the old radio in the car?
It'll be maintained in the, in the short term.
But I mean, they're built into the car, aren't they?
Yeah, but they can be removed. I mean, it, it'll get.
It'll be in the backseat with alligator clips.
Our thought was just keep them in there, keep them, keep them running. They can be initially, especially going to a new system, have them, have them on, they're backed up. They can, they can scan those analog channels still. I mean, a lot of them, we have some older radios as well, they're all still better, better in there. We have some, updated some of those Kenwoods, but the portables for the most part, we're really not going to be using at all. Like, you know, those, those will be the conversation about what we will do with those going forward, the old, old portables.
I mean, if they still work, somebody wants them apparently, right?
It's possible. The, the infrastructure that goes along with them. I mean, point to point, they would work fine.
So what does this mean as far as equipment at headquarters? You're ripping out the consoles?
No, uh, so we'll need another interface. Uh, the company does sell, uh, very robust consoles that do a lot of things. We have found in our discussions with other people on the system that that's not really necessary. So they basically take an extra portable and they hook it up to what they call a workstation. We'll have one at each terminal that we have downstairs. There are two positions and we'll still be able to have all of the same functionality we have in the past.
The consoles would be added a lot, uh, a lot of expense and they were, they're more, from what I understand geared towards like much larger agencies. The CD agency would have a pack of consoles, but.
A nine one one dispatch center or something like that.
Yeah.
And along with that comes also a very high connectivity cost, monthly costs in the, in the $1,000, $1,500 a month range.
So you, you believe it's, it's a $30,000 hardware cost and that's pretty much it? Are there, are there maintenance contracts and?
Now, the beauty of the system is that MTA has taken on the responsibility for all the maintenance. Even the radios, even our radios, we can bring them to their shop and.
The only connectivity cost is each radio through FirstNet is $15 a month. I think I figured it out.
Yeah, there is.
$15 a month if you look for the LTE option to have that, to, to run that redone with LTE.
Which you think we should have?
I think it's a, it's a net positive. We've had conversations about the, the schools right now. The schools are also another area where we're, you know, once we have this radio system in place, about how can we improve radio coverage in the schools? And having that cellular, cellular option, I think is, uh, it could be real positive for that.
So is it a different device you buy that has the LTE function or they all have it? You just have to pay the service?
Correct. Yeah. Just pay the service.
So how many radios, 20 some odd radios?
Yeah.
At 15 bucks a month? At fifteen bucks a month? Three, four hundred dollars a month?
I looked at a little over three hundred dollars a month, uh, three hundred dollars a year.
Uh-huh. And so.
Three hundred per year per year.
Uh, is that what I figured out?
Cause you said three for like per year.
It's three hundred a month-ish for twenty-ish radios.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not three hundred dollars. It's like a hundred eighty dollars a year for a single radio or fifteen times twelve. So, okay, um. Lot of money, but obviously we need a quality radio system.
Absolutely. Yeah, the qua- the quality of the of the the transmissions is, I mean. We had a meeting here, sitting in the back office, and a transmission came across clear as day. Cause if somebody was standing in the room with you, they were in beacon. So it's, it's just a, it's, it's this, it's, and I don't wanna make it sound like, obviously, we don't need to transmit over miles and miles. Um, but it's just a robust system that is that is.
And what's the transition? The stuff is all brought in, you flick it on and that's it?
I mean, there's some programming and some things like that, but we'll have to do some training with the officers as far as what um. You know, what's expected of them, what's what's required, how they work, things like that, but.
Once the antenna goes up on the water tower here and uh then we should be, you know, we can just, we can get the radios and. Really get, but Chief said, start to start with the training, you know, to. The only other option would be if we built out our own radio system, we already priced that out and that was looking at like the hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollar range. To replace what we have currently, plus fifteen hundred dollars uh a month per tower. Per, I'm sorry, per antenna site, which would be one on the roof, one at the water tower. Um, for the connection to that.
Uh huh, and that goes on forever.
Correct, and we'd be also anytime there's maintenance on that system, we we'd be required to do that.
So, I mean, it seems like a generous. Offer from the MTA. What's in it for them? The opportunity to be on our water tower?
Well, I mean, I I I think that's part of it. Um, you know, it was, it was packaged as basically. The challenge of the MTA is that they have so much ground to cover and so few people to do it, that they really do rely on the local agency. So I think they they see internally to their benefit, um, improved communication with those local agencies and direct communication.
And are there other departments in our realm looking at this right now?
So I would say at this point, we're we're relative, last year when we really started, we were kind of toward the front of the line. A number of agencies have come in. Um, MTA has presented multiple chiefs association meetings. So I would say probably, let's say twelve, fifteen departments are ahead of us.
Yeah.
And there's probably at least as many lining up behind us. In in West, yes.
Is there a contract that we sign with the MTA and is that, is the what, is the antenna at the water tower a part of that? How does that work exactly?
You say it would have to be a, an IMA sign, um. The terms of which I, to be honest, I'm not familiar with. Um, but yeah, there would be some kind of agreement that goes on between our agencies.
So this would be something we budget in the forthcoming year and it would happen in fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four.
So our understanding is that that tower is coming from uh money that they expect to spend before August of twenty twenty-three. So they are going to fast track this.
And then thereafter, we're just buying the other stuff and.
I mean, if if the the antenna's up and it goes onto their system and they're using it without us on board for a few months, you know, that'll be fine for them, but. Um, you know, obviously, we can't really do what, it it doesn't seem to make sense to do it beforehand, but there's a lot of work to do leading up to that, so, you know, um. We'll be, we'll be busy between now and August, so we can, as as soon as that system is ready for us, we can be on it.
All right, so it's a big chunk of change.
But you'll at least get Spotify now, right? At least.
Any other question? Eric, do you have thoughts on this?
Um, yeah, we've been talking about it for a while now. Uh, just, um. The one, the one caveat is obviously in the coming years, we're gonna have to replace those motor tanks. And so just kind of coordinating with the Department of Public Works on that goes about is part of this whole conversation.
Their antenna would be literally on top of the tank? Current one is on top of that little side building, right?
So, I mean, they haven't come out and assessed that yet.
I see.
My understanding that it was gonna be on top of the tank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would make sense, right?
Yeah.
Higher is better.
Do they know that we're gonna replace them?
Well, I mean, I imagine that's all workable and that project is not imminent, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's obviously desirable location, very high.
Right, yeah, it's a reason we put the antenna there in the first place.
Right. All right.
Very, very good.
Thank you, sir.
One down, two to go. Uh, second one I'll talk about now is our uh our vehicles. So uh we are currently, um. Currently, uh, one of our vehicles is, one of our patrol vehicles is out of service, and so we are considering the best way to move forward with. Uh, with that. So uh, if, you know, Martin would like to come forward at this point. Uh, Kevin has done a great job taking over for John Liston, building a a a relationship with T C D, who's our uh vehicle supplier. I'm not sure if I came to the board and mentioned, um, but Ford shut down their ordering process. Far earlier this year, um, but luckily our vendor T C D and Mamaronek had pre-ordered hundreds of vehicles in anticipation of the needs of. Uh, all their customers. Uh, so we currently have, um. Uh, waiting for us to, uh, not, if we have to sign off on it, but, um. One hybrid uh patrol vehicle that's available to come in, um. Like I said, we have currently at one of our vehicles is now out of service because it, uh. It was time for it to be retired. Uh, we did, we did not anticipate that happening. It happened a little bit quicker than we expected it to. Um, and then obviously, as the board has directed us in the past, we have, uh, we've been doing our homework on trying to bring uh electric vehicles into the fleet. Um, at this point now, we need a patrol vehicle. Um, and I was not, it was my understanding we were looking for an admin. Uh, administrative, an unmarked car for uh for an electric vehicle. Um. So we are hopeful and expecting to get this, uh. This first mark unit hybrid into the village. Within the next few months, by the, hopefully before the beginning of June, uh, and then comes the next phase of of what comes next. Um, one of, we have two uh vehicles that we use for our detectives. One of them is. The the vehicles unfortunately, unfortunately or unfortunate, uh, don't get much use. Um, but we do need two of them in case someone's a training or anything like that. So uh what we would be looking to do then would be hopefully in the summer, take, um. Take delivery of a fully electric vehicle. We're currently in the process of working with Con Edison to secure the the ability to put a charger in the. Uh, Wheeler Avenue lot, turn that into uh have that electric vehicle become an administrative vehicle and then either. Um, Lieutenant Wolman's current vehicle is actually a patrol rated vehicle, so it could be rotated into the patrol fleet if necessary. Or potentially, uh, one of the other admin cars becomes a detective car and then we introduce the electric vehicle to our fleet.
So the Mach-E has been tested by Michigan State Police and that's passed their test for for patrol. Is there a reason that we wouldn't consider that for patrol vehicle?
So a couple of things. First of all, the Mach-E, uh, currently, according to our vendor, uh, one of the problems, so. For our needs, we need to put a cage in every single one of our patrol cars. The Mach-E doesn't have enough room to put a cage in to to put the the divider. Uh, between the front and the rear seats and still fit, um. A person in the backseat, um, but we still have concerns.
Mach-E doesn't, really?
According to our vendor, at this point, all of the mark unit, there are mark units that are going out as electric vehicles, but none of them are going out with cages.
Cause what what are you driving?
It won't be until about twenty forty-five to twenty twenty-six that the Mach-E will be able to comfortably put a cage in and allow people to be in the back.
What what's, the the hybrids are what, explorers or?
Yes.
Cause I've been in the back of Mach-E. It feels like larger than Explorer, you know?
The way it's positioned, once you put a cage in there with the seat there, it's. You cannot put even the the new units that are out now, none of them have cages in.
Uh huh.
What did the county just buy?
County's just bought a Mach-E. They marked it, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have the divider between the front and rear seats.
Uh huh. So the divider between the front and the rear seats is for prisoner transport or?
Correct.
And do you need to be able to do that in every patrol car or just one on service at any time?
So we've never had, uh, let's put it this way. Although under many circumstances, I could see if there was a car that couldn't do pr- prisoner transports and a car that could, you can go in that direction. That's a, that's a, it's very difficult to send an officer out knowing that he can't necessarily put someone in the back of his car. Even if it's for a short period of time, even if it's just, even if it's not an arrest situation, you're separating people, um. You know, w- we like to have that secure area where people can, uh, can be placed, it can be. I don't wanna say held, but can be, um. Interviewed or anything else without necessarily them having access to the operational.
So what are the dollars and cents of the the hybrid? That you were supposed to buy as compared to the Mach-E and then the cost of the charging unit and all that sort of stuff?
Uh, currently, the price we have right now for the fully equipped hybrid Explorer, which we could get. Early May into June is seventy-six thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. That's what we spec'd out as patrol vehicle.
Lights and all that already?
Yes, everything fully equipped. Just to give you a comparison, a standard uh gasoline version of the Explorer, an interceptor model, will be roughly twenty-three hundred dollars less. Although it's not too much of a difference between the two, um. For the Mach-E, um, it was initially, they forward recommended. Any Mach-E reportedly should be the GT level. Um, unfortunately, starting in twenty twenty-three, all GT Mach-Es will come with a bulk left. Uh, which for these operations really is safe or rank.
Right.
So T C D, which is our repres- our representative or our our vendor, recommends either the select model or the premium model. The premium comes with an extended battery, which costs a roughly ten to thirteen thousand dollars. So for a select, you're looking at roughly sixty-two thousand dollars for an admin vehicle. And for the premium with extended battery, you're looking around seventy-five thousand dollars, um, for an admin vehicle. Lead time on those, the best you can tell me was sometime over the sun. Uh, just because due uh, due to restrictions and and availability.
So what's the change, what's gonna be the difference in annual operating cost from a full electric?
That's gonna depend, I think, on the charging stations as well, so.
Well, yeah, and also what, I mean, the the charging station is give or take five thousand dollars installed?
Yeah, and well, a lot depends on where you can draw the electricity from, so we have a.
Weather, climate can do it.
Yeah, there's um a utility pole right here in in the lot. Um, that would be ideal if we can, we we had a village electrician. Come out, take a look. Um, we would end up putting the level two charging station, uh, in the island. Between Wheeler Avenue and the lot.
Uh huh.
Um, so we don't know that for sure until Con Ed comes in. We requested that they. You have to go into their system, request a site visit, so we did that. We're waiting on them to come out.
Right, but could somebody see them, I'm not talking about the capital cost to to get it up and running.
Yeah.
But it would be helpful to know the, um, gas and maintenance cost difference on an annual basis. For electric versus uh gas versus hybrid.
Yeah, I'm sure, uh, some other departments in the county that operate.
We could, we could look at that as well. The thing with the electric vehicles again, this is what our our vendor posts. As of right now, the Mach-E is what he described as a one-shift vehicle. It's not like a gasoline or a hybrid vehicle, which can be run basically continuously with simple, a five-minute stop at the gas station. Um, we couldn't use that to replace. A combustion engine. If we were gonna add it to the fleet as a patrol vehicle, it would have to be in addition to.
So why are you saying one-shift vehicle? It's a two hundred, it's a three hundred and sixteen mile range or something like that?
If we run that all day, it can't run twenty-four hours a day. It can't run three.
Oh, you're saying that the battery?
The battery.
Overheat or?
It it can't handle.
Oh, it runs out, you gotta charge.
Those cars are running all day long.
Right, but they're not running the same way your, your car. So if you're, if you're in the spring, let's say. That it's not running the engine, you know, it's it's, the engine will be running the heater or the cooler, but it's not gonna. It it's not the same as a gas engine, gasoline engine running the whole time.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the vendor is telling you that.
The vendor, yeah, and this is how other departments are utilizing them as well.
Yeah.
So, uh, the, um. From a budget standpoint, the the hybrid you could potentially get in this fiscal year.
Yes.
What are the implications of that, Eric?
Um, we have fun downs available.
And then the opposed electric would be the next fiscal year.
Yeah, they're saying sometime over the sun. They weren't able to give us an exact year on available.
The next fiscal year, meaning twenty twenty-four?
The fiscal year that begins June one and ends May twenty twenty-four. Which is the budget we'll be working on now.
No, no, I know, but you were saying that it would be the next, oh, so you mean next.
The hybrid could could be purchased in this fiscal year.
Oh, oh, there aren't any now, okay.
Right.
Sorry, when you said this fiscal year, I was thinking the one that we're planning for.
And, uh. Uh, what does Mike down at the yard say about their capacity to maintain, repair? Whatever, all of the above for both the hybrid and the electric?
Well, we currently have electric vehicles in the fleet for the parking enforcement for.
The Nissan Leafs.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, or Leafs, depending on your view.
He's a, he's been part of these conversations, uh, and he's never expressed an interest or expressed a concern necessarily about.
Yeah.
I mean, it's obviously, it's a, it's a different challenge. It's gonna be a different vehicle. Um, but you know, Mike has a lot of experience with Ford's and I respect him. Vehicle.
Yeah, he was at Ford, uh. Uh, dealership manager, right?
Can you follow up on that question? Cause I, uh, what I've been told is different, so I'd just like to know. Um, about that idea of it being a one-shift vehicle, just what the more detail about it.
I mean, I I I think when he says that, he doesn't mean that necessarily as it's every other shift you have to do it.
No, I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's the idea that, um, between the need for it to be down to charge and the fact that it has, um. That that charging time is, could potentially be extended, especially with a level two charger, um, that it's. It's going to have more, it it's going to have significantly, obviously, more downtime than a, than a combustion.
I get that, and I know that that was a concern about two to three years ago when you were talking about hundred mile range vehicles. But now you're in a three hundred mile range vehicle, not very much of that range is taken up with heating or cooling the car when it's not moving. Um, so I just like to know, I'm not saying they're wrong, but I'd like to know what the components of them.
So we can, we can definitely do some research because, you know. Again, in talking to other people around, you know, the ranges start, tend to decrease sometimes over time. You don't get as much, you know, weather and things like that. Um, so, you know. I would like to, I would love to have a situation where the vehicles would be down for a short amount of time, um. But, you know, we have special events, we have all of these different, you know, we have, where we'd have another super storm of Sandy or another blizzard or, you know, a situation where. Um, we didn't have access to the charging station, we potentially have a vehicle that that comes out and is unable to use.
Well, we, we'll absolutely give you something that meets all of your needs, but I think it's fair to have a fact-based discussion. Um, so list those out, your concerns, tell us what exactly specifically. Against each of those concerns, what your uh vehicle supplier is saying.
Uh huh.
And, um, and we'll take a look at that, cause.
Well, and also maybe the goal can be kind of looking into the future. Like you said, you're aware of the fact that these things are gonna continue to improve as we go forward.
Yeah, there's.
One, one thing I wanted to mention too is that, um, I don't know if this would be helpful, but we may be able to. Um, get grant funding for the charging station. We've been getting a lot of grants from the state for various, um, clean energy. Projects and that seems like one that we could possibly fund.
Yeah, there's a lot of inherent conservatism in the people's nervousness about something that is new. But the reality is electric vehicles are much simpler than combustion vehicles. They're inherently. Less prone to mechanical failure. There's potentially a lot of advantages for the department. So I just wanna make sure that all of our information is accurate in terms of what the capabilities are, what the concerns are.
And and I hope it's clear that, you know, we are not standing on, we cannot have electric vehicles in the fleet. Um, you know, for patrol for our needs, but the fact that we have. Five patrol vehicles and on some tours, all of them are out at the same time, um. You know, I I saw that the county got one and I don't know how often, you know, it's gonna go, it's going to Mount Kisto is my understanding, um, and it'll be used. There, there are plenty of cars up there that if that car has to sit for eight hours and charge, then that's what they'll do and they'll have no problem with that, so, um.
Here's another thing, if you're in there and I, I don't know the. Uh, details on it, a firefighter in another jurisdiction told me that there is increasing concern about fires. That, that, uh, uh, apparently, eh, they are very hard to put out. If if a car catches on fire.
Yes.
Like, very hard.
Yes.
Hmm.
Well, it's a lithium ion battery, you know, so yeah, for sure.
Uh, so.
Is that the?
Yeah. It's not that we've had fires, but there was an accident recently and this person told me they. It took thirty-five thousand gallons of water to, to put out the car fire.
And that, you know, our, like, just, just to be clear, I wanna make, you know, our commitment to electrifying the fleet. And that, you know, our, like, just, just to be clear, I wanna make, you know, our commitment to electrifying the fleet. We have no problem with that. Uh, half of our uh, fleet is administrative. Um, so we'll have, you know, ample opportunities to potentially, even if we weren't able, even if the, the. The needs of the department and the needs of the community weren't met with um, patrol vehicles, we're still uh. Anticipating the ability to, you know, go green a little bit with, with, with a significant portion of our money as we move forward.
Well, I think we understand that it's an incremental process, you know. Do let me know though, if there are things that you can do in that process that you could really use funding for, because. Um. Like I said, we've been, we've had like five grants so far, and I just met with a grant writer today, we might be eligible for new things, so it's good to. To be aware of, you know, where we could use that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. Alright, did you have more?
I had a quick question, uh, how, how many miles per day does a patrol car drive, girl like? Are you kinda, I don't even, I guess I just don't know.
Yeah, so um, you know, we don't. It, you, we used to figure out about thirty to forty per car per shift, so that would put around a hundred to a hundred and twenty uh, on in a day. Um, we're in the process now of updating our sheet. Well, I can give you some, some, when we come back to the budget and we talk a little bit more about it, I can give you some more. Um, detailed information on that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but again.
It seems like, yeah, just to support David's point, that the capacity, the mileage capacity for fully electric vehicles. Is uh, pretty impressive right now with.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely not something where we think, once the car starts going, it's gonna end up someplace out of charge, like that's not it, but it's. Um. You know, a number of the other factors that go into it, it's simply, it's unfortunately not as simple as we simply go to the, to the village garage. Put gas in it and within five minutes that vehicle is back.
Well, and I wonder about the charging type of charging stations too, right? Because they're also like the super speed.
So there's no chance to get a level three charger?
There's somebody in our plan for our committee that is.
Yeah, it's a level three charger would be a half an hour charge.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the conversation we can, we, cause we started that, and to be honest, when I said before, you know, my understanding was we were looking for more admin vehicles. Was because we get sort of backed off of the possibility of a level-three charger. They're extremely expensive and the power load that they require, when he came and he looked in our area, he said. You're gonna have a really hard time, and as we discussed, Con Ed doesn't come out and just say. Yeah, we'll, we'll give you, we'll give you a heads up, we'll point you in the right direction. So we have to show some sort of commitment to them coming out to assess, but I mean, he looked around and said, you're never gonna get enough. Uh, basically enough juice from this area to. To make it, to make it feasible that we could put a level-three charger in this community.
I mean, Con Ed had to upgrade the service to Memorial Plaza to do what we did.
Right.
Also, as people at our vendor, the level-three chargers, for a long period of time, can't actually have a deteriorating effect on that, so. Just forcing that much raw power into it or repeatedly, repeatedly, can actually reduce its.
That's interesting.
Cause I think, let me try, if I have a pedal assist, then you can. Alright, so you'll send us that stuff, did you have some, one more?
I got one more.
Alright.
Alright, staying here for this one too. So body worn cameras, police reform, uh, we discussed, one of our goals from police reform was to uh, examine the feasibility of. Body worn cameras for our officers. Uh, we have engaged in that process. We're currently getting numbers and um. Uh, talking to some different vendors, talking to our different partners in different uh, different agencies. I'm gonna talk in very round numbers, we'll talk more specifically in a minute, but um, we're looking at probably a price tag that floats around. For the initial upkeep, the first year, about forty thousand dollars. There are different companies that are out there. Um.
Then different equipment acquisition and cloud storage?
Yeah, so some companies offer only cloud storage, some give you the opportunity of server storage, we would recommend cloud storage. Um, for that. Um. The good news is, we applied for and received a grant.
Yes, we have that on the agenda tonight.
Yep, that uh, that will absorb twenty thousand dollars of that cost. Um, that is not a recurring grant, that is a one-time only uh, for the initial, so we'll still have costs, uh, that the mayor said regarding. Um. The storage and the maintenance of the videos. Um, so. We are not at this point um, ready to come to you and say this is the vendor we've chosen, we're still sort of working through that. Um, but uh, you know, because it was police reform and because we have touched on it in a little while, I did wanna come in and.
And so is there any deadline to spend the twenty thousand, the grant?
Uh, there is, but it's not, it's first year of time.
And it's always seemed to me to be a subject ripe for a county contract that we could all pay back on. Has there been any suggestion the county might do that?
So far, no, um, I haven't heard that, it's, it's really been individual, individual.
And, and would, would you buy one for every officer, or is there a pool of them for a shift and you grab the one that's available?
So. Kevin, you want to speak on that?
Sure. I've spoken with several different partners around the village, similar size who already have cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The recommendations for most of them, it's more effective to have an individual camera for each officer. Uh, in terms of accountability, uh, work flow, and uh, chain of custody regarding video, to have one. Camera designated for each officer, as opposed to having a pool, having them in a separate rack and just being assigned to one as, as you come onto it.
And how much are the individual cameras, give or take?
You can pull around about some fifteen, eight hundred dollars.
And do they last, it's the kind of thing you replace every few years, like, I assume that technology gets better and?
Yeah.
Yeah, as, well, the, I've spoken with Exxon, who makes, who owns Taser.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other main competitor is Washboard by Motorola. Um. They do software updates periodically, um. When they're plugged into their charging dock, they will upgrade their software automatically as part, as part of the service. Uh, in terms of how long they last, their current model right now, the body three, um, I don't think it's slated to be upgraded. Uh, any kind of soon, I think that the, the Exxon model.
So at some point, the battery gets tired, it needs a new battery.
Those are things that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in terms of that, for the customer service, if something does happen, they're very good, but we can send it back, they would replace it.
So I, I, I assume. Taking this step is. Important and also inevitable, right? I mean, at, at some date in time, every department will have this.
You think it will be required?
I don't know, I mean, what are you there?
I'm curious what you guys think about it, how you feel about it.
So I think it, it's gonna be very difficult for New York State to require something like that, just because of the wide. Range of demographic, you know, the, you know, the, the socio-economic. For upstate, it's gonna be very difficult for them to take that on.
Yeah.
Not only the equipment cost, but also the personnel cost, because this is very labor-intensive, and this is the type of, this isn't necessarily something that. Um, you know. Our theory is that this needs, this is the work that needs to be done by a lieutenant or above. Um, we're not gonna have sergeants doing this, we're not gonna have, you know, officers can tag and they will have a responsibility to keep the, for lack of a better term, the data clean. Keep the video sort of, you know, not just dump everything in, until you have just a big pile of um, clips that, you know, aren't uh, associated or uh, organized. Yeah, it's. So that, to me, is the, is the, is the main challenge, you know, our, our point of view is. That as the management of the department. We've had a, a number of incidents that have occurred, that even, that, that don't. Rise to the level of necessarily concern, but where we have two conflicting stories. And so if there were to be any concerns as far as, and I have not heard them, I will say this clearly, I, no one has come to me either from the union or individually and said. Don't get body cameras, we don't want them, because the officers realize that in the end, it's better to have an unfiltered. Unbiased version of events on, on record than it is not to. Um, so there may be some trepidation at first, but I think honestly, a lot of those thoughts, you know. There are just too many instances where body cameras have helped officers, have supported officers' events. Um, or version of events that I, I really don't expect there to be.
Or cause the problem is you have a pit, you have uh. People taking video of events, but then they're only sharing with you the part that supports their. You know, their version, so they don't have the five minutes before uh, some interaction. Or the events leading up to it, or, you know, so this way you at least have the entire interactions on video, right?
You'll even have sometimes, even if it's not edited video, it's simply the perspective of an onlooker is completely different than the perspective potentially of the officer who's on the scene.
I feel like it will impact your policing in any way. I mean, I'm just curious, like. We didn't used to have cameras during our work session and it changes the dynamic, you know? Do you feel, have you thought about that at all? Um, do you have a?
I mean, I think there might be some cultural changes that come with it.
Yeah.
I think there'd be positive changes. I mean, obviously, you know, it's, it's anecdotal, but, you know, the. In any interaction when an officer's wearing a camera, the officer always knows he's wearing a camera. So does that sort of act as a, you know, kind of. Keep you a little bit more on point maybe with what you say or don't say, or how you act. It's, it's, that has been the impression of people who've gone to them in the past.
Okay.
Um, not that I necessarily have a concern about how our officers are acting without cameras on, but um.
I mean, the bigger departments all happen now, right? White Plains, Yonkers, New York. I, I, I know that White Plains happened.
County hasn't known.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, well, I mean, I certainly view it as s- s- something we need to do. Um, that would be part of the budget process to consider this year. I also think we just can't have you back very often because it's too expensive. Yeah. So. Alright, great, great. Thank you chiefs, thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Gil Martin, Lieutenant Wallman, uh, much appreciated.
If anybody wanted to notice how timely I was, I would appreciate that as well.
You got here on time, we didn't get you out on time, I'm sorry to report. What do you think, Eric? We were supposed to talk to Mike.
Yeah, do we wanna see if we can get him in?
Let's squeeze him in here.
Yeah.
Are you there, Mike Newman?
I am here.
Alright, sorry to be late.
No worries.
Can we zip through your issues, do you think, rapid fire?
Uh, I guess that depends on you, but yeah, I hope so.
You, you've watched too many of these meetings, alright, Camp Bull Panther Club. Why don't you lay it out? You've given us three minutes.
Yeah, let's start with camp. So I'm proposing to increase uh, camp fees, uh, the biggest reason is, you know, we're, we're seeing. When we're out booking trips actively right now, trips, entertainment, we're, we're getting prices back that are. Coming back from three to ten percent increases from last year. Um, you know, we're gonna be going out to a bus bid uh, within the month. I don't know what that's gonna come back at. Um, but hopefully, pretty similar to last year, so I'd like to increase the fees. Uh, by uh, a ten percent. Uh, in that memo, I broke it down, uh. Showing you what it would cost from last year to this year. Um, I, I think Eric circulated um, a RAPS. Um. Uh, data collection on other municipalities and their fees. Uh, this increase uh, wouldn't be anything where we'd be suddenly the most expensive camp in the county. Uh, we'd still, for the most part, uh, be right in the middle. Um, you know, it's a little hard to judge uh, off different municipalities, cause we all do something, you know, we all do something similar, but all, a little different too. On how we structure camps. Um, but I would like to make that increase to just keep us. Um, where we would be comfortable covering our expenses and, you know, having a, a safety net.
So five percent increase seems reasonable to me, I, I did have the thought. Should we just round these numbers, you know, four hundred and ten dollars instead of four oh eight?
I always have that thought, I, I'm with you, um, so I, I would not have any issue doing that, um.
I don't know, it just seems reasonable, I mean, there's something about, you know, four hundred and fifty-two dollars seems like there's some sort of mathematical precision to the whole thing.
Yeah, I don't know how they got to that point, so I would have no problem rounding them off, I'd actually love to do that.
So anyone have further thoughts?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Increases are, are really quite modest. Twenty dollars-ish in most of these cases, alright. Next subject, Mr. No.
The next one, uh, let's go to pool fees. Um, so obviously, we're gonna be getting a new pool and then, you know, in the future, um, but. I don't think we've increased uh, pool fees in quite some time, if not the entire time I've been here. Uh, so I'd like to, you know, basically, uh, you know, as far as the pool goes. Um, we are pretty much operating, you know, at close to, if not a little bit above, uh, even. Um, so I'm proposing a couple of different things uh, for this new year. Uh, an increase by uh, ten percent on all fees. Um, and also uh, looking at uh, adding a ten-pack. Of day passes for anybody, they don't have to be members. Uh, we did this a couple of years ago. Um, uh, you know, I, I'm, I, Nicole had brought this up, it's been brought up before. Um, I've been a little hesitant on it, cause you know, for me, I just, I, I want us to pump membership, I don't wanna give people too many other options to. Do other things, we want them to be members. Um, I, so I priced it, I think it's a, a decent price, but it also encourages people to really think about. Whether they wanna be a member or just get this ten-pack. I would like it to be a one-by-one per household. Um, to, to, again, to increase uh, people's desire to be members and not, you know, go with a potential cheaper option.
Seems reasonable to me, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same price, resident versus non-resident?
Um. Uh, I'm not offering this to residents.
Okay. Non-residents.
To non-residents.
I'm sorry, that's, yes, sorry, apologize.
Yeah, okay, that seems reasonable, and a ten percent increase in fees seems reasonable to me, especially as you report, it's been a long time.
And then the only other thing I was adding would be an early bird, uh, I, I, I know we did this years and years ago. Uh, it's been a long time since we did it, I thought about bringing it back, so basically the early bird. Uh, for a resident is basically last year's fees. Um, I would look to run the early bird for like two or three-week option for people to sign up early and get a bit of a discount. Uh, and I'm not gonna offer this to non-residents. Um, you know, we brought this up before, I think this will be a discussion when we. Do it, eventually put in the new pool, is going back to uh, our fee structure where it's in-village, out-village. Fees, right now, we're just using the zip code for the pool.
Right. So you're saying with the new pool, we would go back to the actual village?
Well, I think, in talking with you guys a little bit, I think that's gonna ultimately be the desire. Um, I've explained.
Oh, cause it's village residents who are burying the bond cost and, and non-village residents are not, so.
Right, and, and, and just, you know, I, I've brought it up a couple of times, just cause on my end, as far as. Community pass goes, we have to do some backend work as far as make addresses and putting in the, the proper information. So that people are charged to correct them out, uh, as far as which address is in the village and out of the village.
Sounds reasonable to me. Comments from anybody else? Sounds good. Alright, we're, we're rocking here, Mike.
Alright, alright, uh, the last, the next one, uh, Panther Club. Uh, I'm sorry, let me just pull it up. Here, sorry. Alright, so Panther Club, I'm proposing a small increase for the twenty, a couple of things. One would be an increase uh, for the next season, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Uh, a, a small increase of two percent across the board. Um, I don't know if this memo got out to you guys or not. Okay, great.
We have it.
So it's a pretty, it's a pretty minor increase, I mean, Panther Club is a healthy program. Um, you know, basically just looking to, you know, maintain that health, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking in the new budget, I'm looking to increase. The base pay of our group leaders and Panther Club staff to help us. Uh, maintain current staff and try to recruit some current, uh, new staff in the future. Uh, this year, we've gone through a lot of people, a lot of interviews, so I'm hoping that, uh, you know. Rate increase for staff would help that, um, and you know, just supply costs in general have, have gone up, um, not that we're, you know. Crazy dependent on supplies at Panther Club, but uh, things have gone up. The other things I'm looking to do, and I brought this up, uh, but I would like to. Uh, end Panther Club a half hour early, you know, we're, we're seeing. That most of the children are gone at or before six o'clock. Uh, so I don't know if, you know, having that extra half hour on the books. And having staff stay for one, two kids, now I know some people may block at this, but you know, they. As far as the cost to stay for a couple of kids, it, it just doesn't add up when it, and most of the time we're done at six. Especially this year, we've got more kids than ever, uh, so I'd like to bring us back down to six o'clock instead of six-thirty.
Is it literally one or two kids?
Yeah, most days they're done at six o'clock.
So some days it's no kids after six?
Oh, yeah.
And some days it's just one or two, it's never ten?
No, not this year.
Has it been in past years? I, I'm just trying to get a sense for the number of people who would find this a hardship.
Not, not, not ten, um, you know, past years, it, it's always, I would. Not 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 ten. Um, you know, past years, i- it's always, I would say, let's say, five at the most.
So that said, for those families, that would be a hardship to get back by six sometimes, right? I don't know the answer to that, but.
Right, uh, it's possible that there may be a few, but it it uh, we're not just gonna leave their child, so, you know, what, basically, we would build in the same structure we have now, just the new time that there's there's a, you know, a a late fee for picking up late after so much time. Um, uh, again, not, uh, we're looking to, you know, hammer people and we're pretty flexible.
No, I understand. I understand, and it is a costly venture to eat people when they're relatively kids, and I imagine having the staff more reliably released by six improves their enthusiasm to stick with the job.
Sure, and then this also gives us the flexibility a little bit to kind of have, uh, you know, i- if we needed to, you know, have a better staff meeting, typically, we try to have staff come in uh before program and and have a quick staff meeting. Most of the time, this would give us the opportunity to have a quick meeting after the fact with everyone. Uh, because we've got, you know, people that work for the school, we've got a staff member over at the middle school. Uh, so we never really have the full staff when before kids are arriving. So this would give us a little bit of an opportunity at the end to have a quick staff meeting with everybody. Um, so that would be helpful as well. And then the only other thing with Panther Club, I would like us to no longer offer this program for middle school. Uh, at the end of the day, it's just really not designed for them. Most of the time, they're bored, they don't want to be there, they and again, that's not necessarily up to them. I know it's families that may or may not need it. But we're at the point where we are sending a staff member over to the middle school for one child. Um, you know, that staff member can watch up to ten kids. It would be much more suited at BRS with the rest of our group. Um, that staff member typically has to go to the middle school and wait to, if we have more than one kid. You know, at at most, I think this year it's been four. We have to wait for them to finish. They may be not be on the same schedule, so we may have two of the kids and then two other kids are at their extra period, and we're waiting, just waiting for them to be done so that we can walk all over together.
I think that's reasonable.
Mike, can, not that we're gonna do this immediately, but is it possible for you to help us understand what would be involved in offering a morning option?
Uh. Um.
Well, just for starters, let me, let me comment.
Another employee.
I've been a party to various conversations with the schools, as has Eric and Mike. Um, and I think that that would be very, very difficult for the schools to uh make space available. I can't obviously speak for them, but I I can say with certainty, to to their eternal credit, that it is a difficult program now, after school.
Yeah, it's all hard. Um, and it may not be possible, but this is something that parents have approached me repeatedly asking for, and I think we should just understand exactly what's involved, and it may be an easy no once we do. Um, but I think it would be helpful to to go through the exercise of figuring it out.
So let me say something about that, and and that is, I don't, I don't, uh, obviously, e- every exercise is worth it to make sure. I will say, as as I think we've said a few times, w- we're nearly alone among municipalities in running the program we run.
Leading, leading municipalities.
Right, you know what?
We're leading the county towards a new future.
A- a- and and it it is a very difficult program for us to run. Um, and uh, I do think that if there is an option for more extended day or more or before-school stuff, um, it it may, that may be a more logical service provided by a childcare agency or not-for-profit. What do you think, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, there there are churches across both streets from BRS too. I mean, like, we could reach out to see if they want to run a one-hour.
No, I mean, they could also.
We're already, it's already eight, eight, eight AM to six PM as it is.
Look, I get it. I'm just saying, this is something that villagers, including this group, who, you know, really, uh.
I totally get it.
Yeah.
Right, having been at at the years back, a parent with their very significant childcare needs, but um.
Well, plus traffic, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is that the overwhelming traffic that we get twice a day. Panther Club helps a bit with uh diffusing, as do the clubs, with diffusing traffic for pickup. But nothing really affects it in the morning, so so there are some arguments. I would totally, if we can, you know, if we can move Panther Club to these nonprofits and the churches and everything, that would be awesome. It just hasn't worked out that way. And I'm not saying that we should do this, but I think that understanding, you know, i- if this is something that is doable but requires an investment, or doable but but it's gonna be expensive for the parents or whatever, like, just knowing what it's gonna be is worth doing.
Well, I I part part of the question, and obviously, it to be vetted as we think about it, is whether it's even realistic for us as a as a municipality to consider. As opposed to potentially whatever role we could play in encouraging other agencies or other s- settings to take it on. Um, as you, as you already know, we have a a whole lot of trouble. Thank you, Mike and your team. Uh, maintaining, what do we have? How many total employees for Panther Club, Mike?
Uh, I want to say it's twenty-three, twenty-four at the moment.
So, uh, and and some inevitable churn, right? People leave, new people come in, and and we're in a circumstance where you have successfully been able to grow the program with the school's assistance for more space, but there still remain um, more kids and families that would like to take advantage of it, right?
Yes, there's still, unfortunately, there's still people on the waitlist. I mean, each month, we're trying to add a few more uh where we can, but we're basically, you know, pretty much maxed out uh at our new max.
So, I mean, and again, this should be part of the review that you proposed, uh, David, but I mean, that the the idea of expanding that in a significant way, especially expanding it to a setting uh, you know, six, seven hours offset from what we already do, starts to turn into, we would need to create an entire department to do it. Right, it's not.
Well, yeah, I mean, for me, right off the bat, is depending on what time, you know, you you're talking about, you know, potentially a new full-time employee that's, I mean, I guess you could do it with part-time, but you're not gonna have any full-time staff. And let's say it's at seven or seven-thirty. You know, we don't have any full-time staff in that could even be on hand if needed. Uh, again, uh, tha- that's just one thing that popped in my head. Um, I I have no problem a- at some point diving into it a little bit deeper and talking to the people that.
I don't either, and I, I don't mean to sound like I'm throwing a wet blanket on it, other than I I I was there when this all began. I've seen its evolution, uh, to the eternal credit of all the folks that got it together and and folks like Mike who keep it running. It is, it is uh, honestly, m- m- more, more than is realistic for us to do as it exists right now. And we do it because we've got a whole bunch of good people working on it, and we're trying to s- to to serve our residents. We're, we're also serving as as we should, a lot of people who aren't village residents. Uh, who have kids in schools, and we don't make a distinction of that kind either. But uh, I I, we are uh, logistically constrained in a whole bunch of ways to to try to become what would become potentially a, the childcare agency with activities that spread across twelve or thirteen hours.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think the the thing, on the other hand, um, we Panther Club is better than most options that most parents across the county have. And I think we really have led in creating an affordable, manageable option as as god-awfully expensive as this village is to live in, is one of the things that we actually do that feels like a screaming bargain, and yet um, is done on a cost-neutral basis for the village. So, um, Mike, that that speaks to uh the great job that you've you've done. But I don't think because something is hard that that should mean that we shouldn't be doing it. I think this is actually exactly the kind of thing that government could do. Things that we can do cheaper than than uh uh providers uh moving into areas where they abandon us. Um, and where parents wouldn't have a choice without us, um, and where we can provide it with excellence. Um, and help mitigate some of our other issues at the same time. I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm recommending it for the mornings. I just would like to know what it would require.
I mean, the first question obviously would be, where could it be housed, and and that would be sort of step one, right?
Yeah, that would be step one for me, is just having the conversation with the school and see where they're at. I mean, i- if, not speaking for the school, but I would imagine they wouldn't necessarily give us all the space we have. They may give us like the cafeteria to have a program. Uh, but I don't, a- again, not speaking for them, obviously, I can, I can have the conversation and at least get an idea.
Is this something that school districts provide in in some areas? Because to me, it seems, I mean, and I don't want to voice this on that, but it seems like a slightly more logical role for them to play.
Well, so does after school, right?
Yeah, but I mean, this particularly because it segues immediately into school, right? So they have staff potentially who are in the building. We don't have staff who are on the scene yet at that hour.
We would have to, obviously.
I mean, we didn't have staff who were on the scene at all before we did Panther Club, right?
Well, no, I'm just wondering. I mean, I'm not, I'm just wondering if in other districts, that is something that it's done. I don't know who I'm asking.
They're they're often breakfast programmers at large, large schools that
Right.
that service function where they open the door to the cafeteria. There's a couple, an eight or two who watch and kids eat breakfast. Those are much, usually much larger schools.
Yeah, in Brooklyn, I remember that.
Larger urban, urban environment.
Um, I mean, there are, you know.
Because it's basically for parents who have to be at work earlier and who want to drop their kid off.
You know, and and the other thing to think about is that a lot of those jobs are not um, they're they're working-class jobs, so there's a bias. The 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 way the deal of Panther Club helps um is a pretty broad spectrum of people, but people who work on the third shift in a police department, or people who work in a factory, or people who are other kind of emergency workers who may not be making the salaries of some of our residents could benefit from this in a way that um, you know.
I mean, I don't know, that's true. I think it's people who can go to the city in many cases would like to get in earlier.
Yeah. Um, yeah, no, I'm just curious if if that's something, I mean, I'm sure they would.
Well, there's a lot of late call jobs now are only two or three days a week commuting, so that would have been true.
I mean, the interesting thing about that is that we anticipated that that might reduce the demand for Panther Club, and instead, our demand for Panther Club is higher than ever. What, when, wh- which is just an interesting development in an environment where you think more parents maybe have more flexibility statewide, so. Alright, so.
Uh, just the last thing, uh, would be Pleasantville Day, uh, proposing Pleasantville Day to be on May twentieth?
I, I mean.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I don't know what's going on there. Kind of quit out of the owl. See.
You're muted there, right? Or is that where it's taking, giving the?
Alright, there we go. Nope, still doing it.
Paul, you want to try to mute yours?
But mine is the owl.
Yeah, alright, Mike. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Alright, so, um. That that covered your list, Pleasantville Day the twentieth?
Yes.
Do a one-part thing about the thirteenth, the fourteenth is Mother's Day. The twentieth feels like the best choice. It's fine by me.
Yeah, historically, the way it's been, not gonna try to disrupt that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Done. Thank you.
I had a quick question I wanted to ask for this. I was talking to PCTV, we had a meeting the other day on the liaison, and we are trying to make PCTV more of a hub of information. So we wanted, since I figured we were gonna be talking about this, like, what the pool cost is, what camera's gonna cost. We wanted to do a short, like, at most, four to five-minute video. Me asking Mike um some questions about how much it's gonna be, when registration starts, and I'll do it in English and Spanish.
Great.
And we'll get it out there to everyone so that you can start planning.
Great.
Very summer. Let's get in touch this week and we'll set something up with, um, with Shane.
Yeah, that's that's perfect. No problem.
Alright, thanks for that. Thank you, Mike. Thanks for that, Paul. That sounds like a great idea. Alright, we're done. We we can go back to the water system audit RFP afterwards?
Yes, yeah, it's actually the last agenda item, so we can touch on that then.
Alright, great. So we'll segue from our regular, from our work session to our regular meeting. Alright, uh, good evening. Uh, a bit later than we anticipated. Welcome to the regular board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February thirteen. Uh, as is the case in our hybrid meeting world, you can uh, join us here at Eighty Wheeler Avenue. You can also uh join us via Zoom. Uh, picking up the link for the Zoom meeting at Pleasantville-ny.gov. Same place. You can also get links to Zoom meetings for some of our other boards and commissions. Uh, and uh, within a few days, there'll be an on-demand webcast available for this, as well as a an archive of uh past meetings at PCTV seventy-six dot org. Our next regular meeting is two weeks from today, uh, Monday, the twenty-seventh. Couple of quick announcements to make. Uh, we have the state-required property tax agreement night, which is next Tuesday, the twenty-first, at five PM. Uh, if you are seeking to grieve your property taxes, you don't need to attend uh, and and make the case personally, but you are welcome to do so. Uh, we're gonna be here in this room, eh, Eighty Wheeler Avenue, the regular boardroom. Uh, but uh, the forms are available on the Tax Assessor site at Pleasantville-ny.gov. And Lloyd Tash, our assessor, is also available to answer questions on Tuesdays.
Yep, or you can email him at assessor@pleasantville-ny.gov.
Okay, uh, so uh, that is n- next week on Tuesday, the twenty-first, from five to nine, as reported here, yes.
Okay, so not in the senior center.
Right, some years we're in the senior center because of the conflict in the room this year. Uh, we are back here. Our our next regular board meeting is on uh, Monday, the twenty-seventh, two weeks from today, seven PM work session, uh, regular session at eight. Um, I have a few announcements to make, some of which are a little bit lengthy, the result of my uh, two and a half days in Albany with the New York Conference of Mayor's Legislative Conference, talking about this uh, latest Albany proposals, but I'll hold that for a moment. Uh, tonight, we have a presentation by Chief Presner. Let me ask, before we do that, whether there are comments of any kind on any subject by a member of the public? Alright, with that, uh, uh, Chief Eric Presner has been uh making uh, for the last year or more now, quarterly presentations, and he arrives for this quarter's presentation. You tell me when you want me to share the screen.
Good evening.
Ready to go. Okay.
Thank you. So, uh, good evening, mayor members of the board. Uh, so tonight, I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm I'm going to try to move this along relatively quickly because I know you have a very busy agenda, so I'm not gonna touch too much on the data or the statistics as I sometimes do. If there's something that stands out, then I'll do it, but as usual, um, this presentation will be available on the website, and so anybody who wants to go back and check out the numbers, they're more than welcome to. So, uh, we'll go to the next one. So just our usual list of uh comparing certain uh call types, along with what we did the previous quarter. Um, nothing really standing out there. Next. Again, statistics regards to our activity level. Um, and then next. Uh, every, every quarter, we try to touch on some of the highlights of our community policing that's going on. Obviously, community policing is very much baked into everything we do every day. Uh, to that end, uh, we had Detective Charletti, who's continuing to go up to the middle school and speak to the eighth-grade students on a new number, number of topics. Uh, he was also approached, we're hopeful to possibly expand uh his role up there, or the role of any one of our uh detective slash youth officers to go up and present to uh different grade levels and different uh age uh schoolchildren. Uh, and our walkthroughs are continuing. Uh, each day, one walkthrough in each one of the school buildings. Uh, unless, unless obviously there's a poll or some other reason uh, that we can't make it. So this, uh, this, sometimes we go to the schools, and sometimes the schools come to us. This is the uh BRS fourth-grade student counselor came and paid us a visit. Uh, that's uh Mrs. DeSalvo and Mr. Brantwick brought them down uh to to have a little bit of a tour of the building. Uh, it's hard to see from this. Uh, it's hard to see from this, uh, perspective, but this literally might be the best picture I've ever taken in my life. Every face is there, every eye is open, everyone is smiling, uh, it was a great time.
I can speak to that, I've seen a lot of those pictures.
Pretty low bar to get over, but yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, you see a number of our patrol officers, some of our, uh, one of our detectives is there. Uh, and it was just a fun, uh, a fun little visit that they came down and paid us, so we, uh, we always welcome that. Um, in addition, uh, two of our detectives presented a, uh, made a presentation to the clients at the Nicholas Center in regards to internet safety. Um, for those of you who are not aware of the Nicholas Center, uh, it is a, um, it's a work program and a day program for adults with special needs. We have developed a wonderful relationship with them, uh, we can go next. Uh, we did, um, a Coffee with a Cop Next, uh, event, here's some pictures from that where we had, again, a number of our officers interacting with, uh, the, the clients there, uh, some families were there as well, next. Uh, they presented us with some of the artwork they had done, uh, leading up to that, and then finally, next, we also had the opportunity to ask, uh, the Westchester County Police to bring one of their canines over, uh, so that the, the folks there could, you know, some of them are a little, some of the clients are a little trepid, you know, a little nervous around dogs and things like that, so we thought that this would be a wonderful, uh, a wonderful opportunity. So thanks very much to the staff, uh, that has continued to keep their doors open, uh, for us, uh, to come in and interact. So, uh, good news about this, uh, the Nicholas Center holds their, uh, their, is holding their gala for Westchester, the Westchester office on May fourth. It will be, uh, in Rochelle, and this year's honoree is the Pleasantville Police Department and, uh, and myself. So they are recognizing and, um, and, you know, sort of acknowledging the, the great partnership that we've developed, so.
And well deserved.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And it is absolutely one hundred percent been a team effort, that is not something, you know, the buy-in from the, the members of the department as far as, um, you know, really being invested and, and nurturing that relationship has been, uh, very impressive, so. Um, moving on, some calls of note. Um, we had a break-in down on Marble Avenue at one of the, uh, one of the shops down there, the, uh, the, the Raw Cloud House on Marble Avenue. Uh, the, the owner had seen, had gotten an alert from his in, interior camera system that there was something going on. We got there, found that the, um, the, uh, burglary had already occurred, people had left the scene, next please. But in partnership, and again, this is sort of a trend that we're talking about now, with sort of our cooperation with our surrounding agencies, uh, partnership with Mount Pleasant to the search of the area, we ended up, uh, catching three, uh, three people responsible, they were all juveniles, so they were all, um, issued appearance tickets for family court. Um, but again, just a real, um, a real nod to the cooperation that we, that we enjoy and that we need to nurture. Uh, to that end, Lieutenant Wallen here, I think I mentioned this before, uh, Westchester County's broken down into three separate zones for mutual aid. Uh, Lieutenant Wallen was taken on the role of, of Zone A Commander, so he has a certain, different role in any sort of major, uh, activity that goes on, really anywhere in the northern part of the county and, and, uh, you know, in some instances, uh, countywide incidents, so, uh, you know, just thank him for his efforts and his continuing to, uh, really kind of push our department to the forefront, lead, as we said, lead the department forward, uh, into our, with our relationships with our partners. Uh, next please. Uh, very somber, uh, very, uh, sad case that we had to, uh, investigate in, in which, uh, we arrested a member of the public for a, a heinous crime. The reason I bring this up is to highlight the work of our detective division in this case. Um, the investigation was always difficult and it was, um, tough to deal with, but we, again, partnered with the FBI, county, um, the, the, the person who we ended up arresting for this was in, was attempting actively evading our attempts to, uh, arrest them. Um, we had to, a, a number of the traditional means that we, that we used to find people were not productive, uh, and so we had to, um, become creative, I just want to thank Detective Charletti, uh, Detective Sergeant Garcia, Detective Smith, Lieutenant Wallen, uh, they did a phenomenal job bringing this person to justice, so, um, again, uh, very difficult situation that, um, that luckily came to, uh, to the, the best possible conclusion as far as law enforcement is concerned. Next please. Uh, so we've talked in the past about our mobile, our partnership with the Mobile Crisis Response Team, they are currently embedded with us. One day a week now, they come here and they wait here, we are in the Austin catchment area, so they have a number of different jurisdictions that they service. Um, the county was broken down into eleven different catchment areas, uh, we are connected to Austin. We've developed a great relationship with them, they've come out and helped us on multiple occasions. Uh, anything from, uh, parties talking about self-harm to homeless outreach, to even just a situation where, you know, there really isn't necessarily a law enforcement solution to the problem, but we can partner with our Mobile Crisis Response Team and they've done a phenomenal job and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's something that had existed in the past and then sort of went away and then in the wake of police reform, it's, it's been brought back to the forefront and I think, especially for us, we're, uh, we're enjoying great benefits from it. Next please. Uh, we will, I think we discussed this, uh, the less poorly meeting, but we are, we're finalizing our emergency management plan, uh, in case of an, uh, 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 storm situation or any sort of other, either natural or natural disaster or emergency situation, we're going to follow the National Incident Management System to, uh, delineate responsibilities and duties, uh, and that plan is laid out so that everybody understands in advance what their responsibilities will be, uh, and that will be in front of the board undoubtedly before the next, uh, before the next time I'm in front of it, put it that way. Next. Um, so you see our staffing and overtime numbers, again, I'm, I'm not going to go too deep into this, uh, there is some, uh, there is a significant increase, especially in the months of November and December, in which we had, uh, some employees who were taking, uh, turn a leave, a number of employees on vacation, and of course, like everyone else, we were strongly hit by the combination of the flu, uh, the coronavirus coming back and the, the. Yes, uh, so, uh, we asked a lot of our officers who were available to step up and everyone, uh, everyone did, we, we, uh, I don't think the public saw that we were, um, uh, we were here quite as much as we were, maybe you noticed that same, like the same four officers seem to be on every traffic stop on every call, but, um, you know, thanks to the officers for their dedicated service and, um, we're looking forward to, um, decreasing those numbers for sure. Uh, next, you can skip through the next two, those are just comparative, and then the next one is a little chart that we continue just breaking down, so, um, you know, really, as we talked about last time, what we call now tour coverage, which is basically, we just don't have enough people, so whether that's because of vacation, it's personal days, it's training, um, overtime that's, that's generated because we're, we're down some people, we, we have some holes in the schedule, we're calling that tour coverage and then there's some other specific, um, overtime categories that we, we delineate out just for reference purposes. Uh, next please, so into that end, to, uh, to improve our situation and to keep things, uh, moving along, we have continued to train our new officers, we are continuing to recruit new officers. Uh, we're expecting to hire, to have some new faces here, uh, next month for your approval. Um, just for the public's application, uh, once we have, we, we, we are constantly balancing the need between, or the, 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 um, benefits and concerns regarding either hiring a new officer and putting them through the account, uh, through the academy or taking a transfer from another agency, obviously both have their benefits, uh, transfers are here much sooner, um, uh, but they come from, you know, they have a, a background that we are not familiar with, well, obviously we've done a background, we know their, we know their background, but we don't know their experience, um, and we don't get to mold them quite as much, uh, but we've had great success, we believe, uh, so far with, uh, our process of bringing in, uh, transfer candidates, so we expect in the next few months, our, our, the, the people who we bring in front of you will, will in all likelihood be transfers, probably putting anybody through the academy.
And just to be clear, that the wave of turnover is retirements.
Retirements, absolutely, um, and we, we believe we're coming to, uh, coming to the end of that, although we did just see, uh, our, one of our patrol sergeants, we hired in January, Tom Woods, one of our, our detective sergeant retired just last week, and that was Juan Garcia. Uh, they both served the village admirably, um, thanks to all the members of the board who came out and supported them, uh, as they were, as they were headed out. Uh, it's a, it's a bittersweet time when, when that happens, um, these are people who we've, we've all worked with for years. Um, we develop relationships with people, the good news is people tend to keep coming back, so I guess it's not such a bad place to be at the role. Um.
Two recent retirees, John Westone and Tom Woods, ca- came back for the walkout.
Yeah.
Of Juan Garcia, I think it's.
Uh, next please. Oh, we're here.
Yeah.
Uh, so. I believe, so we are current, our, our parking enforcement, they're civil service terms, community service worker. We do that so that they are able to do other things besides merely parking enforcement and especially during the pandemic, that was a, a critical, that was, that was a very important set of skill, the personnel that we had to bring to bear, any number of tasks, whether it was, uh, delivery of meals or checking on people, things like that. Um, so our current community service worker, civil service is a tricky, tricky thing, but we hired, we, she, we hired her prior to her taking a civil service exam. Uh, back in July, finally the exam was given, we were very happy to find out that she scored, um, not only did she pass the test, but she scored in the top three, so she's immediately available to be hired on a permanent basis. In addition, that gives us the opportunity to fill the second community service worker position that we have in the village, uh, that, you know, uh, civil service was not comfortable with the test already having been, uh, announced for us to potentially hire somebody who wasn't on the list. So we just ended up waiting and, and having, uh, one, uh, community service worker, one parking enforcement officer, so we're hopeful that, uh, the next few weeks or months, we'll be able to work with, uh, civil service and get another person in here and get back to full staff on that front. Uh, lastly, on this particular, uh, item of our personnel, uh, crossing guards, we have a, a great group of crossing guards, I, I love our crossing guards, um, there's just unfortunately not enough of them, uh, and they still do, um, you know, they still have needs to go away and to do things, so we'd like to have a bit more of a, a more robust, stable reserves, uh, which we don't have at this point. Um, so we're constantly attempting to get more people to, to come in, we're looking at different opportunities for people to, um, to join our ranks in that, in that, uh, in that role. The pedestrian committee has been extremely proactive in attempting to get the word out, and I thank them for that. Uh, and hopefully if we were able to reach staffing levels that are acceptable, we could, uh, potentially examine other opportunities for those crossing guards. So, uh, again, I, I never miss an opportunity to remind the community that if you're civically minded and okay with being outside for about an hour and a half in the morning and an hour and a half in the afternoon on most school days, there is, uh, there's an opportunity for you as a crossing guard here in the village to really, really contribute to the safety of our schoolchildren. Uh, next, uh, training, obviously a critical, critical facet of what we do. Uh, we, we met our goal of having all of our officers, uh, put through our principal policing class along with implicit bias. We sent Sergeant Burwell to become a, a trainer for that and we, um, in the last quarter, we ended up getting the entire department trained up in that top incredibly important topic, next please. Uh, in the fourth quarter, we had Officer Paul Hatchard, who attended the New York State Women in Law Enforcement Conference. Uh, she's done with that the last two or three years, she and Sergeant Holly are both given the opportunity to go to that each year. I think it's a, um, critically important opportunity for both of them to connect with their peers uh, and discuss concerns and challenges and opportunities that, that might present themselves. Uh, both Detective Charletti and Officer Parides, uh, attended an interview in interrogation school, uh, and again, the focus on that school really is, um, relationship building even in the short term, uh, gaining trust, uh, being honest, having, uh, forthright conversations and establishing a, a trustful area in which people can feel free to, to say what they know. Um, because, you know, we do recognize that obviously people still have some hesitancy about, uh, speaking with officers, even sometimes under the best of circumstances, so, um, we thought that was some extremely important training for both of them. Officer Parides also is, uh, one of our Spanish-speaking officers, and so for him to have, uh, a little bit more, he, he has more opportunities to talk to people than maybe, uh, some of the other members in patrol just by nature of his, uh, his bilingualism, so we thought that was, uh, an important, excuse me, training for him to, to attempt. Next please. What I'd like to do here, this is more or less the, the end of the program, I think this is a world record for how fast I've done.
I don't know, you're on page twenty-four of thirty-four.
I know, they go quick.
You got ten more slides here.
Um.
We did set some goals for twenty twenty-two and I just wanted to go through those goals. Some of them, I'll admit, we, uh, we did not, uh, complete or, or meet as to the, to the, uh, to the level that we would like to, uh, and so those goals will, uh, continue on and we will continue to do that. Um. Also, I would, I would very much appreciate if the board had input or, uh, thoughts on, on goals for the coming year, specific, you know, goals. Obviously, there's, we have a lot of goals in the department, a lot of unspoken goals, uh, a lot of tasks that we want to accomplish, a lot of projects that we want to finish, but our goals really speak to, uh, what we think is important, where we're going to put our resources, whether that's financial or personnel-wise. Uh, and so getting the board's input on where those, where the, the focus should be is, is, we think is very critical. So our first goal, uh, for last year was to increase our presence in the schools, uh, and at special events to enhance the safety of students and staff or relationship, relationship building and familiarity. Uh, if you saw us at a football game, if you've seen us at a basketball game, if you, obviously our walkthroughs, um, you've seen the, the, the visible presence of our officers, that's great, but it's also, uh, a lot of things that maybe people, uh, don't see. It's the quiet conversations, the, uh, the meetings with administrators and things like that. So we think we, uh, we ended up having, that was a, a pretty successfully, my goal, next please. Uh, we talked about the walkthroughs and the drills last year as, as places where we could do this, and I think, uh, especially with the new superintendent sort of, uh, coming in and taking a fresh look at things, we had a lot of different opportunities besides just those obvious public-facing, uh, interactions to, uh, to really embed ourselves more, more in the schools. And although it is not a goal for, you know, the, the continuation of these goals is also a goal as we go forward, so, next please. Uh, goal two is to increase our outreach, uh, to engage with and build trust within seconds of the community to remain cautious and interacting with law enforcement. Again, something that we take very seriously and we continue to do, um. We were not able to, uh, one of the goals that I had looked to, one of the ways I looked to accomplish this goal was to host another, um, Spanish-speaking interaction, I had a question and answer, we did, we did one of the, uh, if you remember, one of the police reform meetings we did in Spanish, and thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for facilitating that. Uh, we have built some inroads into the community and we, we expect that we will be able to, um, bring some sort of posted event, uh, into reality sometime in the next few months, um. But at this point, we have not, had done that, we, we definitely, um, you know, we've increased our number of Spanish-speaking officers and, and, and expect to continue that trend. Um, look forward to continuing to work with the Community Police Communication Advisory Committee. The CRO is the Community Resource Officer, uh, we've discussed this before, but it's, it's similar to the, the model that's utilized by school resource officers in which, um, officers really look to the community to find out where they can solve problems, it is very, it's, uh, harkens back to the original community policing idea, uh, we have officers who are trained as community resource officers, uh, and we're going to continue to investigate how we can maximize that. And then, as I said before, we did complete our principal policing training. Uh, our third goal was to enhance and improve response to calls from mental health service and/or involving persons with special needs. Um, we've seen our partnership with the Nicholas Center, we sent three, the three officers to the CIT training, that's crisis intervention training, which gives officers the opportunity to see firsthand, uh, people who are, um, either dealing with mental health issues or, uh, emotional needs. Um, and then obviously, so that, that's a, that's a full week school, so that was a strong commitment that we've made as a department and as a village with your support, obviously, to make sure that we could meet that, um, meet those goals, but we sent three officers to that, the good news is, the need for that is gone, the need for us to send officers for that specific training is going to fall off because that training has become embedded in the academy protocol, it's been that way for a couple of years. So as we continue to hire new people, we asked them in the interview, did you have, uh, crisis intervention training, uh, while you were in the academy? And so far, the answer has been yes, so we're, we're running out of people who need to still attend that class, uh, we won't be hiring anybody. We don't anticipate it, it hasn't been ordered. Uh, and then obviously, we talked already about the county crisis team, uh, mental health diversion is something we're still working on in which nine-one-one calls that reflect, uh, a strictly mental health, uh, focus are diverted away from a police response into more, to a, uh, to a more appropriate response. Uh, goal four, related to bias and bias incidents. Um, participate in outreach, communication and training to properly respond to those incidents and update the public regularly on bias incidents that are appropriate. Uh, luckily, we had some help in this one and that, the, the Westchester County District Attorney's Office has, um, has opened up a portal, or they have a, uh, it's not, it's not a hate crime coordinator, but they have a separate desk now at the District Attorney's Office that is focused on bias crime. We interact with them regularly, we upload any incident that relates to bias to that portal, uh, and then, you know, between information sharing and, uh, statistical analysis, uh, they, we, we interact with them, uh, very specifically, it's, it's a great partnership to have and it's a great resource to have because so many of these incidents, um, they're not as, because they don't always have a direct criminal connection, a nexus to criminality, excuse me. It's very easy for sometimes those cases. It's very easy for sometimes those cases to sort of fall into the cracks. Um, just because there wasn't a specific place for it to go and for it to be reviewed. Uh and though, although it is the District Attorney's Office and they prosecute our criminal cases, the fact is, is. They don't just want the crimes, they want everything. So um, that partnership and that, that focus and that commitment from the District Attorney's Office really. Uh gives us an opportunity to have a place for these things to go, uh when it's appropriate for there to be some follow. So that's. That's good. So we've done, uh, we do our regular reporting, we've been doing the training. Uh we have listed on there the DEI committee, I have not, I'll be honest, I have not uh interacted with them yet, uh but I look forward to giving some in the near future, uh obviously. Uh any assistance that can be given on that, um, in that realm would be appreciated. Uh and then lastly, is direct training of officers to improve quality of service provided to the public and to reduce liability. Um. Uh to that point, next, uh, we did. Um. Subscribe to a system whereby we now are, have all our rules and regs are digitized. They are able to be accessed by officers, not just in the big thick book, but also um remotely. Uh that platform also does uh training tracking. We haven't really started using that yet, just because we have so many different opportunities for training. Um, you know, right now, every officer has a file and they go to training and something goes into the file, and that's simple and it's easy, but it's not necessarily as. Uh searchable, scannable, it's not as interactive as maybe we would like. So we're going to, we're looking to continue to expand on uh. The, the uses for that system and how we can make sure that not only we deliver appropriate training, we provide opportunities for training, but we also track. And can uh, can be aware and, and on point with the, the training our officers have accomplished. Uh, okay. So for twenty twenty-three, rough outline so far of where our goals, where we see our goals being and where, what we'd like to focus on. Uh three, three topics. Um, the first is continued community engagement. Three areas there that we, we're talking about, community interaction, that's maintaining um, not only at the schools, but also walking posts. Um, uh having officers on bikes as much as possible to really break down the barrier between ourselves and the community, give people the opportunity to come forward and see us. In a lot of ways, this first one especially is a continuation of what we, what we have been doing. Um, we're going to continue to work uh on uh mental health. Uh work on being available and responding appropriately to calls that are involving mental health. Uh and then substance abuse disorder. There's a couple of different programs that are out that I'm very interested in getting up on, one of which is called Leave Behind the Lot Zone. Which basically allow, once our officers are trained, they would be able to simply leave a Narcan kit at a house of someone who they believe um. Might be, might be useful to have. Listen, Narcan is, is useful for everyone. Accidental overdoses can happen with this. Um, these don't have to always just be, you know, people with a substance abuse disorder, but when our officers come across that, to have the opportunity to potentially leave a life-saving medication in a home. Before they leave, uh we think that's something that's worth, uh, worth pursuing.
And we interrupted, in, interrupt briefly, I, I was going to mention in my office, uh, there is a uh. A uh Narcan training being offered. If you go to west, uh, help dot westchester.gov dot com slash Narcan, you can sign up for a free Narcan training program if you care to.
Is that one of your announcements?
That was one of my announcements, there we go. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I, I thank you, Angus, you gave me the offering.
Uh, secondly, is officer wellness. So we've had uh one of our officers, Officer David Sal, who is uh never afraid to pick up a mantle and. Uh and run with it uh and do more. Um, he is currently our uh special needs liaison officer and he has. Um raised his hand and offered to become our department wellness coordinator, so we've sent him for some training in regards to officer wellness. Officer wellness is obviously an umbrella term, uh that encompasses a number of different things. We've really focused so far on um. On trauma, on um reacting to, responding to, you know, we go on calls and we see things and we deal with things and you never exactly know how you're going to react to it. We want to make sure that our officers know that it's okay to come forward and say, you know, I need help. Um, and that's, that's a, it's a. Um, it's a barrier that we still struggle to overcome. I think it's, it's becoming more pronounced. We're, we're seeing uh. The public is very supportive of us. A number of nonprofits that we work with are very supportive of, of first responders. Uh and, and the critical uh needs that we have, and so we're going to continue to um, to partner with them and to make sure that we are. Um, keeping our officers in, in the best mental and physical and emotional uh state as we can have them. Um. I think it's, you know, it's the least that we can do for it, so. Uh and then lastly, uh succession planning, so this is not a uh. This is not a hint, this is not a, this is not anything. Uh, well, we have uh.
Oh, why is that on the line?
We have done through a lot of turnover.
But you do have your lieutenants here.
Yes, I have, they have. Um, we have done through a lot of turnover lately, and I think something that we have recognized as a group is that. Um, the department is getting younger and the department is. Too often, tasks, ideas, opportunities were in silos. Uh certain people did certain things. Uh the senior police management were the ones who made decisions, were the ones who did everything, and then. Uh officers were expected to, I don't want to say simply do their jobs, but. It's our belief that we will have better investment and better outcomes. Uh were we to include people at all levels in as many different decision-making processes as possible. Um, give them the opportunity to see different things that maybe they wouldn't see, give them the perspective of what it looks like from somewhere else. So. We haven't come up with a, a game plan yet. We did start this um just recently for the first time in a long time. We included sergeants in the interview process for our new hires, uh for our new employees. They came with a great perspective. Obviously, these, they're going to be spending much more time with the, the new officers than, than I will, or than the lieutenants will. Um. And we're really committed to making sure that not only the officers currently have the ability to sort of see what else goes on. Um but potentially, these are the officers from whom we are going to promote to sergeant, to lieutenant, potentially to chief. And so they should be um, they should be understanding the sort of what the uh, what the job looks like, what's out there. So whenever possible, we're gonna take, do our best to um. Prepare everybody for what happens next. So that is all I have.
Chief, I thank you for that. I think that was, in this book of world records, you packed a whole lot of stuff in, very efficiently.
Um, oh, the only, the only thing I was, the last thing I would say is, I do intend for these um. These quarterly updates to be a dialogue. So A, obviously, if there's a question, I, I welcome them. B, most importantly, if there is anything more that you would like me to drill down on. If there's a question that you have leading up to it, please let me know if there's something that maybe I touched on in one of the first ones that I haven't talked about again since and you were interested in. Let me know and I can uh, I can add it to the presentation.
Were there any bias or hate incidents in the village in the last quarter?
So we are currently, uh, we have one incident that is currently under investigation, uh that we, again, did uh interact with the district attorney on. Um. But that is a continuing investigation.
Okay. Have any questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, lieutenants. Yeah, we've been here since uh six or six-thirty with us in, in executive session. You can come anytime you want, enjoy half hours, well spent. All right, thanks, guys. Uh, okay, great.
I think a second, second.
Sixty-second break there.
Sure.
No. Hmm, apparently, our Boy Scout was pleased, so.
He didn't stay that long, right?
No, but I think, I don't quite know what the task was, but something about, you know, government and actions.
I went to the scouts the other night. Uh, I think attending, attending a meeting is a, you know, one of these bad.
Well, I, she wanted to know if there was something where, that was going to be somewhat contentious, and I looked at the agenda and I was like. It's the only thing I can think where there might be a discussion. It turned out there was about the police vehicles, so.
Okay, well, that was good enough, that was great. Nice to see Boy Scouts come. I, I, I've been to the Boy Scouts quite a few times over the years and uh. A very lively bunch, more lively than ever, not that they haven't been in the past, but. A quite a lively bunch, including a, a couple of kids who were extraordinarily well-informed uh on all kinds of subjects. Ranging from the Constitution to American history to current affairs, so I was uh overall quite uh, quite impressed and amused.
That's great. Need to recruit them.
All right, we're waiting for David to get back and then we'll re, relaunch here.
We need, I think we need to recruit new people for the police community. Um, we, we never really settled on a name, community, communication. So there's been kind of a drop-off of people who are involved with that, so if you know of anybody who might be interested. You know.
Yep. Leaving us. Was a lot.
Well, the problem is, you know, you really need to have somebody who's in charge and I can't be one of us, right?
Yeah.
Um.
All right, David on his way back. Uh, I have a number of announcements to make, let me just ask again at this point whether there's any comment from anybody, any member of the public on any subject or anyone done. No takers. Okay, uh, uh. We've gone on for quite a long while and we have a few more things to do, so I'll try not to take too long on this, but. Uh as you perhaps know, Governor Hokel issued her State of the State address. Uh in January and then right at the end of the month issued her uh proposed executive budget. So there's a period of time when uh the governor can continue to tweak that, it's handed over to the legislature. Uh the Senate and the Assembly each make amendments and offer their one-house budget and the end. Uh, uh, there is an extended negotiation among all parties that results in the final uh New York State budget. The intention that uh is uh that that be enacted by April one, so. Uh, it is a uh, a, a busy February, March uh time period in Albany and uh this year perhaps busier than usual. So a few things to report. One is uh, the uh legislative uh priorities for the Westchester Municipal Officials Association. Uh which I uh assist with, have uh for many, many years uh asked for increased. Basic level support to municipalities. There's a program called AIM Funding and that program has uh. Uh been at the same seven hundred and fifteen million dollars for fourteen years. Zero increases, literally zero increases in fourteen years. Uh so uh I can report that. Uh annually, the increase in education aid, which I don't regret to them, but annually, the increase in. Education aid dramatically dwarfs the entire budget for aid to municipalities. Uh it did so again this year in spades. Uh when uh one point something billion dollars was added to education aid and zero dollars were added to AIM Funding and. The village of Plutonville will continue to be supported by its annual, what is it, fifty-one thousand dollars?
Yes.
Fifty-one thousand dollars, the same fifty-one thousand dollars a year in state aid that we have gotten for fourteen years running, so. Uh that is a, a frustrating uh situation and one that uh inexplicably Albany seems unable to adjust. Uh, I guess we should take uh some pleasure in the fact that at one point Governor Cuomo proposed simply to get rid of. The smaller numbers, uh, uh like the fifty-one thousand dollars given to us on the assumption that they could just save the money because it wasn't changing our lives anyway. So that is quite uh extraordinarily frustrating. Um, another of the matters we have frequently asked for is to exclude capital costs from the tax cap. That is already the case uh for school districts and that is already the case for the state itself, which has the tax cap. But for municipalities, capital costs like repairing and replacing water and sewer uh are all part of the tax cap. And as a result, in my opinion, and I think most of my colleagues in other municipalities, it creates uh a really crummy dynamic for long-term planning where. Municipalities have an incentive to kick the can down the road instead of doing what they ought to do uh to maintain uh their infrastructure, because if you do maintain the infrastructure and have. An unexpected uh or significant cost, it likely causes you to break the tax cap, which in many municipalities is a hard thing to do, so. Um, there are a bunch of other things that have been on our list for a long period of time. Uh but uh I can tell you, I put this list together for the last three or four years on behalf of the Municipal Officials Association and. Uh our batting average is just about zero year to year, so um. That is a frustrating venture, but uh maybe more focused this year than ever on uh the proposals that Governor Hokel has put out called. The New York State Housing Compact. Uh, there are sort of two primary prongs to this and, and let me start by saying. The governor's goal, which I think is laudable, is to address uh, uh a housing shortage that has done several things. Uh one is it has dramatically uh lagged behind growth in jobs in New York State, that is. Uh over the last decade, many more jobs have been created than have uh housing units. The other piece, as a result, in the laws of supply and demand, is that it has produced ever-increasing housing costs. Not only to buy homes in many areas, but also rents. And so we're, we're now in a circumstance in, in various parts of the state, especially downstate. Uh where more, more people are uh by the state's assessment, housing burden. Paying more than one-third of their gross income uh for housing, and in many cases, it's far more than a third. So. The governor's uh proposal is that New York State ought to build eight hundred thousand new housing units over the next decade. When she says housing units, that is apartments and or houses. Um. Eight hundred thousand housing units is about a ten percent increase in the total state supply, which at the moment is about eight million. Housing units. In order to achieve that, she's got uh two parts of this proposal. Uh one is to establish a percentage growth. In the total number of housing units for all municipalities, and that number would be a one percent. Uh growth over a three-year period upstate, but a three percent growth in housing units in municipalities downstate over every three-year period. So we are in the downstate category and what that would mean is that we would be required, if this were to be enacted. To see a three percent increase in our total number of housing units in every three-year period, starting in the period twenty uh, uh in twenty twenty-four. There is quite a bit more complexity to it, including a, a bunch of things that create what's called safe harbor. Uh safe harbor means the state would not intervene if, A, you had achieved the three percent growth. In our case, if uh the three percent growth had been achieved in a look-back period that I think likely means we would be in safe harbor for the first three-year period. Uh, and then there are also five things that a community could elect to add to its zoning code, and if you elected. Two of the five, that would also create safe harbor position. Bunch of those things include a state. A sponsored set of guidelines for accessory dwelling units, a uh, a uh. Permissive code that allows lots to be split into two in, in violation of current zoning, uh a whole list of things of that sort. Uh if a community failed to achieve the growth of three percent. Uh, that would trigger a circumstance where a developer who had been rejected. Or, or by that time period had failed to receive approval, could appeal to the state, the state would potentially overrule the local municipality. And allow the construction as a right. Uh and um, there are a bunch of other aspects of that that are quite problematic. Um, including the fact that many of these proposed developments would be exempted from the State Environmental Quality Review Act called SECPRA. Uh which has been the, the, the gold standard for uh the state requirements of. Review of all kinds of new projects. We are not allowed by law. Uh for our community or our planning commission, our village board, to undertake anything new without going through the review and approval process of SECPRA. Uh but apparently, the state thinks that the goal of creating these housing units is sufficient that they would, they would uh suspend that law. For these kinds of projects, so a lot more detail on that, that's just a, a quick piece. But uh I think that the more problematic piece from our standpoint. from our standpoint, and, and I think from many of our uh, neighbors' standpoints is what's called a proposed transit-oriented development zone, uh, which would draw a uh, a perimeter, a half-mile radius around all train stations. Uh, Metro North and Long Island Railroad. Uh, that would be mostly a circle, likely a little bigger than a circle, because it would incorporate not just the station itself, but also the adjacent parking lots, both public and private that serve the train station. And uh, that would create a so-called transit-oriented development zone of about a cer- a circle of about a mile across. And that would be by state edict uh, required to be upzoned to an average density, in our case, of 30 units per acre. It's 30 units breaker for us because we're between 15 and 30 miles from the nearest border of New York City. Uh, between zero and 15 miles from New York City, the requirement, requirement would be 50 units per acre. And further than 30 unit uh, miles, it would be 20 units per acre. So the point I want to make about that is that uh, there is a lot to be discussed about it and I left Albany without any great confidence that the folks that hatched this plan had even the vaguest idea what it would mean for a community like ours. Uh, it's, it's massively frustrating to be confronting things of this sort in a community that has done its part to develop a new housing. And I can say with uh, pride, I know it's a source of concern for many, uh, but I think we can all be proud of the fact that had every community developed new housing of the sort that we have, uh, both apartments and ownership units over the last 10 years, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Uh, because the, the problem would uh, already have been addressed. Uh, the fact that the communities haven't done it has created a, an argument uh, at the state level that has produced this, I think rather draconian, draconian rule. But uh, uh, at the risk of seeming alarmist, a circle of a mile across is about 502 acres. If you figure, say, half of it is unbuildable, roads, parks, cemeteries, whatever. Uh, and half of it might be buildable. That would mean 250 acres in our case would have to be upzoned to an average density of 30 uh, units per acre and uh, multiply the math, that is 7,500 units. So that is clearly an utterly absurd, completely ridiculous number, uh, and one that couldn't be supported from any logical planning. It couldn't be supported from the standpoint of our infrastructure. You couldn't supply water and sewer. You couldn't supply services. On and on and on and on and on. Would we get 7,500 units? Of course not. That is a theoretical buildout. Uh, by the same token, in places like Westchester County, uh, which are popular and the source of significant development pressure, we certainly would get quite a few. They would again be exempt from SECPRA review and uh, limited in various ways. Uh, uh, by state edicts that would control our capacity to accept or reject. So it's a, a pretty severe proposed intervention by the state. Uh, I left Albany with uh, 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 some optimism, guarded optimism, that uh, there was enough recognition that this didn't make sense, that it was going to get uh, very significantly adjusted. We have been in intensive exchange with our Westchester Senate and Assembly delegation uh, to make certainly understand the issues. Uh, uh, several of us who are in a housing subcommittee for the Municipal Officials Association are are having a Zoom meeting, uh, hopefully within the next two days, soon to be scheduled with the uh, Department of Housing and Community Redevelopment, which is the state agency uh, that is uh, the keeper of all of these requirements. And uh, as I reported earlier, uh, I have the distinct impression that uh, this plan was hatched in a kind of a one-size-fits-all mindset with precious little recognition of what it actually might mean in places like this. So uh, stay tuned. Pretty, pretty crazy times. So um, aside from that, the state budget is relatively uh, unremarkable from the standpoint of its impact on us as a municipality. As reported, there was a very, very significant increase in in funding for education. Uh, I think I leave it to the school district uh, uh, to give you the exact numbers, although I think they announced it the other night at their board meeting. I think the uh, Pleasantville School District ends up with something like a $2.1 million increase in their state aid. Obviously, uh, a very big shot in the arm and a benefit to all of us because the school district obviously accounts for the biggest part of most property tax bills. By the same token, with, with no intent to, to rain on, on their good fortune, uh, it is pretty darn shocking that we will now go another year uh, for a total of 15 years without a single dime uh, increase in the state's support of uh, municipalities. So there you have it, the word from Albany. More will be known soon. I can tell you that there are a, a bunch of us in the Municipal Officials Association working hard on the housing thing. As reported, we're going to have a call with the Commissioner of, of uh, DHCR, uh, who is at the core of this whole thing. And uh, we have a meeting with the entire Westchester delegation of the Senate and the Assembly soon. As, as, as you likely already know, our state senator, uh, which was Peter Harkum prior to redistricting, is now Amber Stewart-Cousins, who is the Senate Majority Leader. Obviously a very powerful and influential figure in Albany. Uh, I had a chat with her a week ago and uh, a- as have the mayors in other districts that she serves and uh, she clearly understands the scope of the concern. Mary Jane Shimskey is our new assembly person and uh, uh, I've had a conversation with her as well. Uh, George Latimer is in the conversation and uh, has I think been working behind the scenes to suggest some things that might uh, uh, do what I think we all want to do, which is to uh, maintain and support uh, housing equity and uh, maintain and support the growth in housing units that, that will create a vibrant state. But we can't possibly do it by steamrolling the sort of community planning that we're all engaged in. So there's my report. More later.
Thank you for going to Albany and for, for, you know, being on the front lines of this.
It's, it was, it was, I don't say. Uh, in, in addition to the uh, thrill of sitting through uh, seminars on these kinds of things, but we all got there to this, to the Albany Marriott. Uh, they, it had gone down, I don't know, minus 17 degrees or something on Saturday. We get there on Sunday and a pipe had burst and the entire lobby was completely full of water and hundreds of fans and guys sucking up water with vacuums and it had come out the front of the building and frozen into an iceberg because it was so cold. So it was, was an amusing visit.
Neither in this present, in this presentation, or was there a presentation? I'm not even sure. Uh, did they give any example of a municipality for which this is a good idea? Or do they, do they really?
Not really. Uh, the Commissioner of Housing, uh,
I can't think of.
Ruth Ann Visnovas, uh, made a PowerPoint presentation that had a sort of a, an anodyne feel. Uh, but I will say, part of what they're talking about is imagining, for example, uh, neighborhoods in Queens that are already pretty much 100% developed in terms of square footage, but at very low scale and density.
Why would they include?
Cause they don't get it.
Northern Westchester.
Cause they simply don't get it. They simply don't get it. I mean, I do think some of this was driven by New York City interests that I don't really see the distinction. Um, but I mean, the kind of density they propose for places like us in a transit-oriented development circle, which is just utterly impossible, unimaginable. You know, they would presage a a tripling or a quadrupling in the entire population of these communities.
They don't, yeah. And it seems as if they haven't studied any transit-oriented development in the rest of the United States because it's never a half-mile.
Yeah, so.
It's like a tenth of a mile.
Well, it's a quarter mile in some states, right. So there, and again.
When you actually go and look at, look at the places, you know, whether it's Denver or Seattle or wherever.
I mean, I think that the governor, I'm speculating, uh, uh, is perhaps uh, not well-served by some of those who have advised her on this. In her presentation, both in the State of the State address and in a in a, a reception speech she made to the New York uh, Conference of Mayors, she said, look, you know, we, we desperately need to, to create new housing. And we desperately need to address the question of housing expense. I mean, certainly look at a place like Pleasantville, New York and, and you do wonder where regular people are going to live.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, all true, by the same token, uh, very little of this is particularly targeted towards affordable housing. I think the idea is that a very significant increase in supply will eventually drive down prices and no doubt there's an element of that. Certainly what we've seen in the recent sort of pandemic-infused uh, uh, housing. Thing is, all these houses going well above the asking price and, and the like, but um, it, it uh, the governor said, you know, we have so many charming downtowns and we want to preserve them and, and this would be an opportunity to take decaying warehouses and turning them into housing. Well, great. I don't think anyone would mind uh, keeping a charming downtown and turning a decaying warehouse into uh, housing. What this zoning code would potentially produce is a state-mandated overlay of our existing zoning that would create a dramatic spike in the value of some properties.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would somewhat accidentally suddenly have development potential they never had before. And I mean, it, it, it starts to bottle the mind when you start working out the details. Almost all of these mile across circles or whatever shape they turn out to be, uh, in places like Westchester overlap municipal districts. And so what that would mean in our case, for example, it would, it, it, it covers almost the entire, uh, pretty much the entire uh, west side of the village, but extends out into the town of Mount Pleasant. And, and uh, on, on the east side heads out uh, just about to Sutton Place, well past BRS.
Mm-hmm.
Crazy upzoning. Uh, you're allowed to create an average density, so you could, you know, you could have 60 units per acre in one uh, to allow you to have fewer units in another. But um, you'd have to then merge and meld uh, the zoning codes of different municipalities. Okay. Here's the half-moon piece of our circle, Mount Pleasant. You have to change your zoning uh, to, to uh, handle that. But uh, then you get into the whole craziness of what happens to the zillions of properties that are on the border and are partly in, partly out. It would be an annuity for land use attorneys for the next decade. So um,
The last um, major policy initiative that showed up in two subsequent budgets that had a lot of people concerned um, was uh, marijuana legalization and it did actually happen. Um, and I would think that that precedent, even though it was under obviously different administration, would make people nervous that this might not just go away entirely.
I think that there's reason to be nervous, two reasons. Uh, one is um, she made a similar transit-oriented development proposal last year in the budget.
Right.
This one is even more severe than that one was.
More aggressive.
Uh, but we jumped on it to point out some of the failures and she pulled it back even before she submitted the final executive budget to the legislature. And said, we realize we jumped the gun on that and we want to be more collegial and work with all of you. I can report that she's worked with none of us in Westchester County, although she has had a meeting with some of the real estate and municipal forces in big cities. But again, in, in places like uh, White Plains, newer Shell Yonkers that have very significant housing developments going in high rises, it's easy to achieve this average density.
Right.
If you have a 25-story building, you can have a whole lot of units on a small parcel. And that means that the average density elsewhere can be a much lower zone. So, so um, but I think you're right. Last year she yanked this out even before she went any further with it. This year it's back and back with not only greater specificity, but somewhat more uh, uh, draconian rules. And so that's a, a matter of significant concern. I can say that it has also, as you might imagine, engendered fierce pushback. Uh, and um, very fierce pushback on Long Island. Uh, Long Island happens to be, by the governor's report, and I have no reason to doubt her statistics, one of the areas that has generated the least increase in housing units uh, in, in recent years. Um, far below that of adjacent states and the like. Um, but as you might imagine, there are also a zillion Long Island Railroad stations and uh, uh, that head out into Long Island. And uh, a very, very, very significant a set of problems, not different from ours, uh, would be engendered by proposing that kind of density. Would that kind of density actually happen? Uh, clearly it has the theoretical capacity to legalize way more units than anybody would realistically build. But in a place like Pleasantville with significant development, if, you know, suddenly some thousands of new units were were permitted as a right, we'd get a bunch of them. So.
What kind of support would this have in the legislature?
Hard to say. Uh, I mean, I do think that uh, the sense I had from the legislators I talked to is that uh, they were a little bit blindsided by this, that the governor hadn't been uh, engaged in an extended conversation about how this might work in everybody's individual district. Um, so uh, Monday night after uh, after the uh, sessions, we had invited legislators to come and hang out and chat and four or five of them did. And uh, clearly there is an understanding that this is a problem and I can tell you that when you start showing people the math, they're like, whoa. You know, 30 units per acre seem fine. 7,580 units breaker. I, I was chiding my colleagues on the River towns to say, half of your circle is in the river. You gotta.
Oh gosh.
So um, I, I don't think it's going to survive in its current form. I could be wrong. I hope I'm not. Uh, but, but stay tuned. Uh, I'll report uh, as we hear more. I will be interested to see how this goes with the conversation about uh, with, with the Commissioner of Housing because uh, she made a presentation and then bolted without taking questions, but kudos to uh, Nikki Armakost, Mayor Hastings and Chance Mullin, Mayor of Helen Village. Uh, they were able to to uh, block her path as she tried to emerge, depart the hotel and got in a few uh, questions and were left with the impression that, no, hold it, hold it. Really? Is that what you're saying? I didn't, you know, so.
The whole safe harbor framing of it seems unusual politically too. I mean, as it, as if the governor is there to threaten municipalities. And that, in that we do what, what she wants, then we get protection from her.
You don't get safe harbor against this, right?
You do not. That's true.
No, no.
She literally said 3%.
Thinking about incentive, you know, why, why, there are so many ways that the state could offer incentives.
She literally.
And not offer this, this kind of punitive.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
They could say, if you, if you develop this 3%, then maybe you'll be fast-tracked for state infrastructure aid. You know, you kind of think ways that you could incentivize certain kinds of development.
I think, you know, the, the, the transit-oriented developments, that's a horrific oversimplification of the math, which is ridiculous, right? The 3%, I, I think I sort of underst-
Uh, that one might get.
Understand all the better.
We're already doing it.
Um, but there are a lot of communities that don't do that.
Correct.
And that regardless of what the incentives were, wouldn't do that. And that's why I think that there, there's a can opener approach to all of this.
Definitely. So all true, but the governor is very, very clear in saying that the genesis of what she sees as a housing crisis, and I'm not arguing that point, but she, she says the genesis of it has been exclusionary zoning and local obstacles created uh, to, to uh, future development. Sometimes nimbyism, sometimes exclusionary, whatever, sometimes you name it. But I mean, I can read you this. NICOM, New York Conference of Mayors is a generally pretty even group because they represent a lot of different municipalities across the state. The statement of Peter Baines, Executive Director, the day after the budget proposal was, "It is difficult to fathom that an executive budget with a $7 billion increase in spending proposed by a governor with an oft-stated strong belief in local governments fails to invest one additional dime in our cities, villages, counties and towns. Abandoning local governments, as this budget largely does, will only make New York a less attractive place to live and work. To make matters worse, the governor also mistakenly lays New York's housing shortage problem at the feet of local officials and proposes to allow the state to override local zoning and land use decisions. Holding municipalities solely responsible for housing growth ignores the fact that not every community has the developed local land or buildings, necessary infrastructure, sufficient demand or builder appetite to meet an arbitrary housing growth thresholds set by a state government that cannot possibly know the needs and conditions of individual communities." So that I can tell you is the most uh, blunt statement I have ever seen out of an ICOM and uh, I think quite accurate.
Yeah.
And I can also say it clearly struck a chord. Uh, we had a reception with the governor and and she uh, started out, I guess, sort of to her credit, tried to diffuse the situation, but also zing a little by saying contrary to press releases that are flying around, I do care about local governments. And Peter Baines, where are you? I have two nickels for you.
But on the subject of our recent, uh, uh, a recent conversation about development in the village and the moratorium that we put in place, it seems that uh, regardless of uh, whether we end up with a dracon- it seems that uh regardless of uh whether we end up with a draconian proposal that's coming here, the idea of um closing the village off to further housing development may not be realistic.
I think that is likely true, right? Stay tuned. I mean, clearly what's going on right now is, as folks in the community know, is we've hired BFJ Planning. They're undertaking a study right now. Uh, uh, that will bring back to us some data about the housing development potential in uh uh our downtown A1 district. Um, that would be blown to bits if this TOD thing were to be enacted by the state.
Yeah.
Because the review that that uh BFJ is undertaking right now is a review of our existing zoning and a comparison of our existing zoning to to uh the zoning that existed prior to our two twenty seventeen master plan amendment. So we'll have more information on that soon. And I I I will say certainly our Westchester delegation for the most part gets it. Uh, and it's it has very significant concerns and nobody wants to have all their municipalities mad at them. Um, and those folks are are very close to us relative, obviously, to the governor. Um. The New York Council of Mayors and the Association of Towns are both front and center. We had a municipal officials dinner the other night and Jerry Geis, the director of the Association of Towns, was there and also spoke on this subject. So there's a pretty concerted uh effort uh in the downstate realm because it's the downstate realm that has the three percent growth proposal as opposed to one percent upstate. And also has the TOD piece because that covers Metro North and the Long Island Railroad. So uh it's uh it it's really, it's it's quite remarkable. So I would have to say uh stay tuned. More later. And what do they say, you know? Live at eleven?
It's almost eleven.
All right. Uh. Anybody want to add anything before we launch?
Uh, we're gonna be um voting later tonight on um a new trustee for the library board. I want to thank the village because uh um in my relatively short tenure of what, four and a half, almost five, almost five years now, um, we've never had this many people apply for a single volunteer position. We had eight interviews for uh one position on the library board and all those people were qualified, some of them extraordinarily qualified. And uh so it is pretty exciting. See that if you haven't done it, I urge everybody to go on to the Mount Pleasant Public Library website and look at the plans for development uh for renovation of the library. Um, there's some uh exciting times ahead.
There certainly are. And I David and I do these interviews and as we said to everyone, you know, uh, if we were talking to you and you were the only applicant, you've got it. You know, thank you for offering your services, but we had this embarrassment of riches. So hopefully that continues in every other category. Um. All right, last announcement I want to make, as perhaps uh folks already know, we have a village election on March twenty first. Uh, I think tomorrow was the deadline for filing uh uh petition to see on the ballot, and so we'll know for certain. But uh there are two trustee positions open. Both Nicole and Paula running for reelection. Uh, and uh the village justice is up for grabs because our longstanding justice, John Pearlie, has decided to hang up his purse. So uh vote on March twenty first, uh village board seats and uh the village justice. All right. With that, is there a motion to open a public hearing concerning introductory local law two of twenty twenty-three to authorize, if necessary, a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three C. So second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this is an annual thing. It 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 does not presage uh uh any intent to uh break the tax cap. At the moment, we're early in the process of developing the budget. Uh, but it has become our practice simply to pass the uh enabling legislation to allow us, if we needed to, to raise the tax cap so that that's in place. So as reported, this does not presage a plan to do it. It simply creates the legal structure that would be required if necessary. Comments of any sort from a member of the public? Or welcome? Enter and sign in, Mr. Rooney. We know who you are, but we need to tell us.
Uh, Rooney twenty-six, Hope You Drive in Pleasantville. My only comment on on raising the the tax cap, uh, maybe I didn't say that correctly, but but putting in, I understand why you gotta do it now in case you need it later.
Right.
But somewhere, I'm trying to figure out, if we look at the Toll Brothers project, which has approximately, I don't know, seventy?
Sixty-eight.
Fifty, fifty-eight?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight. That's close. That's close. Actually, it's more than two million dollars of roughly speaking, if each if each unit was about thirty to thirty thousand dollars.
Much of which goes to school, but yes, no doubt, a very significant increase.
With something like that, that the village has never had before, um I would just like to know why something like that can't be put off the to help you know, counter the other expenses that the town has to hope that you don't have to raise the tax limit. And there's also the hope of residents that because of that newer income, that property taxes for us that's been been here forever might actually go down. Um, and in the light of all the other uh renters that will eventually be in uh next to the post office, if anywhere else it shows up in town, that's is it wrong to say that that's money that the town never had?
It is not wrong.
And um and so.
So here's what I'd say about that.
Yeah.
Um, there isn't any doubt that these new tax ratables have have mitigated increases without question. We're in a circumstance here. Let's just say for the sake of argument, uh, very round figures, the the Toll Brothers sixty-eight townhomes generate five hundred thousand dollars in village taxes-ish, something like that. So that's five hundred thousand dollars uh significantly more than the Baker Properties, two buildings that were there were generating, although they were certainly generating something. So uh that's a great new infusion of cash. That said, we confront a circumstance where, for example, our increase in healthcare premiums can alone consume that and more. Fair to say, Eric?
Yeah. Well, well, also the point that the revenue generated from the developments don't go directly to our coffer. That's just money that gets spread throughout the tax base that eases the burden on the rest of the taxpayers. So that's one, just point of clarity that.
Well, I mean, it goes into our coffer, but because it's new revenue, everybody else gains benefit from it. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, well, right, exactly. But it's not, it's not five hundred thousand dollars straight to our general fund. It's five hundred thousand dollars with a tax.
Right. So but and and so let's just say if our tax levy is what, eleven, twelve million dollars?
Twelve.
Something like that. Um, what that means is we need to raise twelve million dollars from all the taxpayers. And if we have more, if we have more taxpayers, everybody pays a little less. And if we have fewer taxpayers, everybody pays a little more. So yes, that totally helps painfully. Uh, absent any other change in expenses, anytime there are new taxpayers, your taxes would go down. But as as you probably know from your past life i- in uh school districts, we are uh we have a unionized workforce with contractual uh obligations uh and and um in many cases negotiated contracts, in some cases contracts that are inevitably tied to what goes on in the region, two, three percent-ish increases annually at the moment. And for our uh community, that adds up to hundreds of dollars, right?
And I mean, yeah, the healthcare benefits alone will represent probably about three hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So.
I choose well, but. It's a totally fair question.
It is a totally fair question.
We all kind of ask.
I would like nothing more than to say, hey, we got a bunch of new tax ratables, taxes are gonna go down.
Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, I said I would like nothing.
I'm having trouble hearing.
But here's what I, what I'm also happy to say, and that is new tax ratables have mitigated the increases and 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 we've had a a pretty long run of tax increases below two percent.
Yeah, we have. And and like you pointed out, it would help if we got a little bit of money for the state too. I mean, we're incurring all of these expenses. And we're a small village, right? So.
I mean, the state is just like, really? Fifty-one thousand.
Uh, on a different note, but just quickly, listening to the needs of the police department going going forward. When it comes to the new vehicles that that they're asking to have and being either hybrid or or total EV.
Mm-hmm.
Please do your research on the benefits, pros and cons of those vehicles for anybody, particularly in municipalities such as ours, because they're not as green as people think they are. If you go from source to end and they're only green when somebody hands you the key, actually, there's no more key. When they hand you the button to push, um, to drive it, it's green. But to get there, um, the 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 much higher cost of any electric vehicle from a new school bus to a car. I don't know if it outweighs the the uh the the aspect of 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 putting that much money into that compared to if it was another type of vehicle, that would also be economical. Um, the uh the the one thing that no one anywhere has ever addressed, to my knowledge, and I don't mean the board here, I mean across the state from the higher governments. There, the electrical grid, as I'm sure you're aware of, cannot possibly maintain all of this electric charging uh the way that they're trying to get it done. I mean, as you know, like right here, you you couldn't have the the higher charger uh uh in Memorial Plaza be be because of X, Y, and Z and and communism couldn't give you the power. But I mean, if you look at what they've done in in the past, I mean, just recently, this past summer, California said to their residents, cut down your electric usage, turn off your air conditioners. Oh, by the way, if you have to go to work, you gotta walk. Um, so so I'm just saying maybe the cost savings uh would be better if we didn't go in that direction and and if you got the more economical old fashioned ice vehicle, gas, gasoline vehicles. Um, that's just one person's uh uh opinion of of what what's going on. Um.
And I think. Clearly, I I that the the cradle to grave impacts of 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 these things are 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 clearly a big issue. And there are those out there who argue that the 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 heavy metals and the like that go into battery technology are being strip mined in places often less fortunate than the United States. Um. Complicated world, though, and Ford, I think, has committed to phasing out internal combustion engine vehicles by what, twenty?
Thirty-five.
Twenty, thirty-five. Uh, and GM, I guess, is in a similar similar uh mindset. So uh, you know, presumably all of that will bring along uh advances in battery technology and the like, but um it's a complicated world. There's no question about it, but uh.
And they mentioned about the fire, uh, somebody when the
I I mentioned it, John.
was talking. Um. You basically can't put them out. You have to cool them off. And you cool them off by just pouring water on them until they until till they're cool. But by that time, whenever they're in the house, you then never put your electric in your garage.
Well, it's funny that the uh 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 related, what I'm related, the New York City has had a very sick, something like two hundred and seventy-five fires with those uh electric scooters.
Mm-hmm.
Because people keep them inside. You know, you have an apartment, whatever, you don't have a place to leave it outside.
Yeah.
And um uh, it's uh, it's been a significant problem. So. And Eric?
Well, uh, you've had a kind of a long day, so you don't need to listen to me anymore.
Glad to have you here, though. Thank you, Tom. You're right.
We appreciate the fact that you attend the meeting.
Um. Well, I'm a very busy person.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. Any further comment on the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing?
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. All right. To the resolutions, twenty-nine, Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and the minutes are passed to this resolution.
Is there a second? Comments or corrections on the minutes of January twenty-three? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, and it's all number thirty.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three is listed below. Budget transfers of the general fund, seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars from contingency transferred to capital for a new DPW dump truck. One thousand five hundred dollars contingency uh to planning outside service, a hundred and twelve dollars from admin tuition assistant to admin part-time. A hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents um from Otis PB admin to uh tuition assistant to PB admin holiday pay. Uh, that's a total of nine thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Budget transfer of the refuse fund. Uh, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents from legal to unallocated insurance. Two thousand dollars from contingency to gas and diesel. That's a total of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Increase of revenue and expense of the capital fund, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars interfund transfer from general fund for the new DPW dump truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dump trucks are expensive.
They are. They take a while to get.
Like a year.
Yeah. They don't come off the lot.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, David thirty-one.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment claims dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three, covering check numbers one oh two, one oh six, two, seven, three to one oh six, four, six, four. The general fund, four hundred nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Water fund, hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred and two dollars and twenty-seven cents. The capital fund, one hundred six thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents. The refuse fund, thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents for a total seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
As I often report, you can click into our agenda that you can get to through club and the SNY dot gov and click into all of the line items, any of these, if you care to do so. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, Michael twenty, thirty-two. Sorry, thirty-two. I'll get it.
Whereas introductory local law two of twenty twenty-three has been introduced to consider the authorization over the tax cap for fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, if necessary. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory local law two of twenty twenty-three was held and closed on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, now therefore being resolved, the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law two of twenty twenty-three, which shall become local law three of twenty twenty-three upon its passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
As reported a moment ago, this does not presage a plan to break the task cap. Jim simply puts in place the capacity to do it if needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, thirty-three, back to you.
Resolve the board trustees hereby approves the closure of Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Day celebrations on Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, from six AM to four PM. And further resolve, the board of trustees authorize the police chief to post no parking signs effective Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three until all vehicles are violating of this temporary restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. All right. Mark the calendar, Saturday, May twenty, Pleasantville, David. Nicole, thirty-four.
Resolve that the board trustees hereby authorizes the revised retirement date of Thomas Woods, police sergeant, effective uh January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We switch it around based on his accruals?
Exactly, yeah.
All right. Uh, as mentioned earlier, uh, we have had recent retirees, uh, uh, both Tom Woods and and Sergeant Garcia, and we were pleased to send them off into what we hope to be a happy retirement and hope to see them again soon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, thirty-five.
Resolve the board trustees hereby authorizes the increase in vendor fees for the twenty twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival effective May first twenty twenty-three, craft vendor from a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and ninety-five dollars. Retail vendor from two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and forty-five dollars. Off-site services from three hundred and sixty to three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Food services from three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred and fifteen dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pretty straightforward. Uh, a music festival is lined up. Tickets are on sale. It will be on Saturday, July eighth. Buy your tickets. And if you care to be a vendor, sign up soon. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved. Thirty-six. Michael.
Well, sorry. Oh, I got it. Resolve that the board trustees hereby authorizes the police chief Eric Ruster to accept
Result that the board trustees hereby authorizes the police chief Eric Cruster to accept funds from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $20,000 for the purposes of procuring body worn cameras.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that's a great result. We had a quarterly presentation, uh, by the chief, uh, uh, earlier, uh, in our regular session, but also a presentation uh, in work session about a bunch of capital needs, one of which was the potential to, uh, uh, purchase body cameras for the cops. That is around about $40,000 in total, and this would fund half of it. So, uh, there hasn't been a, 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 a decision on exactly when to proceed with this, but I do think it likely that we will get body cameras for our police. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 37, Paul.
Result of the board of trustees hereby accepts the retirement of Joni Erlich, coordinator of senior services, effective May 8, 2023. Retirement letter attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we know this was starting Joni, uh, retiring come the spring, and, uh, we've been talking to various folks about uh, how we might recruit for, uh, a new person to lead our senior services. Eric's been all over the question of, uh, getting that job description together and getting it out. So, uh, uh, we look forward to, uh, sending Joni off into a well-deserved retirement and the arrival of, uh, a new hire. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 38.
I'll get your computer lines. Result that the board trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Catherine Sable as ex-board, effective January 25th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Kathy recently joined the ethics board and then, uh, was fortunate to get, uh, some new job responsibilities and finds she can't, uh, proceed with it. Thank you for your brief service and we'll come get you again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 39. David?
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the recreation department to waive 2023 full membership fees for the active members of the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department and Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps residing within the village.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've done this in the recent past. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Why don't you take 40 as well, David?
Sure. Resolve, board of trustees hereby appoints Kent Anchor as library trustee to the Mount Pleasant Library, Mount Pleasant Public Library Board, effective February 14th, 2023, for a term to expire December 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, as David reported earlier, we had a, a, uh, a list of eight people interested in this, uh, position. Very much appreciate Ken Hanka's willingness to do it and very much appreciate the other seven folks who threw their hat in the ring and, uh, are, are very much interested in finding that way to take advantage of the talents of that whole cast of characters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. 41, Michael.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the donation of two Pleasantville Music Festival tickets for the Byram Hills Preschool Association.
Is there a second?
Second.
Happy to support the Byram Hills Preschool Association because uh, they'll hopefully bring a raft of other parents with kids to the music festival on July 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Back to you, Paul.
One, two.
Yeah.
Result of the board trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute the proposal for Woodward Incurne Engineering and Geological Services for a water system audit and rate study in the amount of $45,300. That will form a superintendent of public works attached to the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was a matter we had in work session and did not get to, uh, but I think it was attached, uh, to the agenda item and is the result of a conversation we've had before. Presentation by Eric and and, uh, uh, our superintendent public works, Anthony Carr. Um.
Was it, was there any substantive change from the presentation that we should know about?
We, uh, we went out to RFP, we had three proposals submitted to us. Um, uh, Woodward Incurne was the, the low, low proposal, but, um, they're well-known in, in the water industry. Um, and, uh, their proposals spoke to our, our P requirements. Uh, Anthony has worked closely with them in the past, most recently doing a similar analysis on the wall sewer system. Um, and had very good things to say about it. So, uh, as we mentioned during the, the work session when we discussed, um, there's two layers here. We operate a, a water system that's in a very empty state right now, but that has significant capital needs in the years ahead. And we were confronted with variable water rates that are increasing and fix free et cetera increasing too. Um, so, uh, we want to get a gauge on it and, and have a firm, long-term strategy to pay for everything we need and keep water rates forward.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That being the last of our regular agenda items, is there any new business or comments on any subject?
I have some. Uh, the Best of Westchester has announced a lot of the businesses that are up for, it's like the non-care round to see what they say on the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
And happy to announce that, uh, the Pleasant Chamber of Commerce has been nominated. So let's hope that we get some vote. Um, the main, the, I guess Wheeler Avenue is, is of a category of best, like, main streets. So that's the person who had that. And our very own mayor is also nominated for best mayor of all Westchester.
Well, there you go. I, I, I heard about this today, which was, uh, uh, previously unknown to me, uh, and, uh, I will say, I have, I appreciate whoever voted for me. I have somewhat mixed feelings about the whole idea.
There's a lot of businesses that are on there, many that are in, on Wheeler Avenue, on Bedford. Um, so many that are members, so many that we know. So I encourage everyone to please go there and take a moment. There's different categories. So as long as I can, you hope for at least four or five, you'll be able to catch a roll. So please do that. It's really, it's a really big help to all the businesses in Pleasantville for you to do that. So, um, as the chamber will also send out in our newsletter, our eGlass, will send out all the different categories where a Pleasantville business has been nominated so that hopefully everyone can see it and support our, our local businesses and local, uh, people.
I, I would say take a look for the businesses, sir. All right. Thank you for that, Paul. Anything else? Anything new from anybody?
Can't top that.
Any speakers in the Zoom world? There are a few of them there. That being the case, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion approved. We adjourn. We will see you again in two weeks on Monday, February 27.